This is Steve Lionel, Chair of the City of Nashville Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the May 11th, 2021 zoning board meeting. As Chair of the Zoning Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by Governor Sununu because of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 and extended by Executive Order 2021-6, I'm keeping up with these. This public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, we are videoconferencing utilizing the Zoom application for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via Zoom, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available on the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashville's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and were applicable notice to abutters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Normally, the Board utilizes a light timer, which will not be available. However, the Board and all participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. They may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use Zoom. Documentary exhibits and/or visual presentations were submitted in advance of the meeting so that they may be displayed for remote access viewing. Real-time public comment can be addressed using the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access or by telephone. Real-time comments via audio will be addressed at the conclusion of the public hearing. The public is also encouraged to submit their comments for future meetings via email to the Planning Department, planning@nashuanh.gov, or by mail. Please make sure to include your name, address, and comments. Letter should be addressed to the Planning Department, P.O., Box 2019, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03061. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll-call vote. Zoning Board meetings will be held electronically until it has been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Zoning Board, the Planning Department, and city staff thanks you for your understanding and patience during this difficult time. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashville zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application, and it will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. Per the City of Nashville bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present to this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error? You have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashville Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Lionel, I am the Chair. We have Ms. Mary Ellen McKay, who is our Vice Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier, who is our Clerk. We have Mr. JP Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. We also have the following alternate members in attendance. We have Mr. Jay Mankara and Mr. Nick Kanakis. In addition to, that means we do have a full quorum because we have all five full Board members in attendance. The alternates will participate in discussion, but they will not be voting unless one of the full members recuses themselves. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Poirier, Zoning Coordinator, and Mr., let's see, is Matt Sullivan here? No? Okay.
I am Mr. Chair, yes.
Oh, you are, okay. I didn't see your name earlier. Mr. Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Director, very good. We will start the meeting by taking a roll-call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Mary Ellen McKay.
Excuse me, Mary Ellen McKay is here in my home office with Bentley, my two-year-old Shih Tzu.
Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present and in the room alone.
JP Boucher.
JP Boucher is present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Rob Shaw.
Rob Shaw is present, and there is no one in the room with me.
Jay Mankara.
Jay Mankara is present, and there's nobody in the room with me.
Nick Kanakis.
Nick Kanakis is present, and there is no one in the room with me.
And I, Steve Lionel, I am also present, and there's nobody in the room with me. Mr. Falk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Okay. So I will now read the first case into the record. Owner Carol Hood, forgive me if I pronounce names incorrectly, address 25 Eastman Street, Sheet 110, Lot 63, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-264 to exceed maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 51% proposed, to construct a 12-foot by 16-foot shed. This is in the RA Zone Ward 6. So Carol, you're on, and please give us a summary of what you'd like to do.
Thank you very much. We presently have a somewhat temporary construction of a series of nylon tarps supported by a pole structure tied down by ropes, which is what we're using functionally as a shed. What we're hoping to be able to do is increase the functionality, the safety, and the aesthetics of that space by having a formal shed installed there. We had originally thought it would be a 16-by-12 shed, but we actually think we don't need that space. We're looking now at a 12-by-12 shed, so it will be actually a tad smaller than that. In terms of safety, we think that it's, in keeping with the public interest, is our requirement by having it be a lockable structure. Right now, a tarp over poles obviously can't be locked. That will allow us to more safely store chemicals, both pool chemicals, lawn chemicals, et cetera. I think the aesthetics will be greatly improved for the neighbors, who tend to look at it more than we do because it's behind our garage, so they tend to have to see it more than we do. I think it will look far better and will be in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood. The other thing that I think will benefit the neighbors will be the noise reduction. As anyone who's ever gone camping, the sound of nylon tarp flapping is not terribly pleasant. And even though we work really hard to keep it in good shape in terms of securely tied down, I mean, it is a tarp strung over poles. So we think that it would improve our responsibility to store things safely, but also would be, I think, an improvement for our neighbors. The other point that I think is relevant is that while it does increase our accessory use above that typically permitted, when you look at how we're using various portions of the properties beyond the driveway, such as the pool, the deck, patio, it really is at surface level. So even though this is technically an additional structure on the property, I don't think it's going to increase a sense of the property being built up at all. So I think it will still be in keeping with the neighborhoods being quite open in terms of the lots, having a fair amount of land attached to them beyond their actual structures. If there's any questions, anyone on the department has for me, I'd certainly be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Questions from the Board? I'm not seeing anybody with questions from the Board. Last chance? Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing any? Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Again, okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting where the Board will discuss the case. Ms. McKay, any comments?
Excuse me, no, I'm fully in support of the application. It's reasonable, and it's actually beneficial for safety and with respect to noise and the neighbors. I fully support this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I feel from the sidewalk that there won't be any appearance of overcrowding of the land. You know, it's a well-kept property, and I don't think most people are going to even know there's going to be a change to the proposed shed. I think certainly the shed is an upgrade from what's there. I, you know, no abutters have spoken against it. I was keeping an ear open for that, but, you know, we haven't heard anything negative, so they're assuming they're positive because they think it would look better, as I do. So I'm in support of it. Think it meets all the criteria.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in full support of the application for the reasons I've already spoken to.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Likewise, I'm in support. I don't really have anything additional to add. I concur with what my colleagues have already noted. Thank you.
Mr. Kanakis.
I am also in support of the variance application.
And Mr. Mankara.
As well, I would just note that the use proposed, the shed, is moderate in size and obviously a customary typical use, as of the other accessory structures, detached the garage and the pool, and the overall lot coverage is not inconsistent with the neighborhood.
Thank you. And I'm also in support of the application for all of the reasons my colleagues have said. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Carol Arwood, owner of 25 Eastman Street, Sheet 110, Lot 63, requesting a variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-264, to exceed the maximum accessory use area, 40% permitted, 51% proposed, to construct a, now is a 12-by-12-foot shed, as testified by the applicant. It's in the RA Zone Ward 6. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Again, comments that we made, that we discussed were, again, that this would not show any overcrowding on the lot. The structure is a customary use on a piece of property, and that the shed will pretty much be hidden from any view, so it wouldn't really be noticed. We find it is within a spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Steve Lionel, vote in favor, so that's five to nothing. Congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal, as I discussed earlier, and if you have any questions, please contact the Planning Department.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Moving on to case number two. Amy and Adam Groff, 44 Taylor Street, Sheet 7, Lot 74, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach 12-foot by 15-foot addition. This is in the RA Zone Ward 7. Is there somebody here to present this case?
Hi. I am Amy.
We're having... It's very stuttering, bad connection. I'm sorry, we can't hear you. It's sort of like you have a very bad internet connection.
Maybe she can try calling in.
Yeah, you could try calling in telephone. Kate, you must have the number.
Yes.
You're than I do.
Yes, if you are ready, I'll tell you what number you need to call. If I can.
Well, she may not be able to hear us, or we can't hear her.
She's muted, Kate.
Kate, you may try putting it in the chat.
Sort of sounds like she has an echo with the feedback with the speaker. There's the phone number, but it also needs the passcode, right?
Yes, I am working on it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. I switched to my phone instead of the computer. Thank you for bearing with me. Okay, so my husband and I, we've lived in this property for eight years. We love our home, we love our neighborhood, we love our location that we are in Nashville. We have three children, who are eight-years-old, six-years-old, and four-year-old. We are also foster parents, and so we often have up to five children in our home. We need a little bit more space, especially as the kids are getting bigger. We're finding that we need just a little bit more space. The plan for the addition is to use as a dining room. Our current dining room is nine feet by 11 feet. We have a small table, and we're a little squished. Our family is quickly outgrowing our dining room area, and something that we really value in our home is having a space to come together every night. We believe a 12-by-15-foot addition for this purpose would be fantastic. It would be onto the back of our home. The design that was put together was made to be as seamless, to make it look as seamless as possible with the current structure of the home. It does encroach five feet onto the 10-foot setback. Our current side of the house that that would be encroaching on is four feet from the property line. And so we did bring it in a little bit more than a foot, so that it wouldn't be all the way to the edge of the house, but would still be able to give us that space of the extra square footage that we need for the, in the property. We have, or I do not believe that this would diminish the character of our neighborhood. It would not be seen from the street, and I do not believe it would decrease the values of any homes in our neighborhood. We have spoken to our neighbors, and we have not heard anyone opposed. And I do have a letter, too, with signatures from our neighbors that said that they agree with the addition, and we're not opposed to it.
How many do you have?
We have six signatures from the people on, from neighbors on Taylor Street and also on Five Field Street that own our property. And I believe that is, we would really appreciate your time and your consideration of this.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Not seeing any? Oh, Mr. Shaw has a question.
No, I think if I understood correctly, your existing house is already only four feet away from the property line? Is that correct, in the same side of the property?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and so this would actually, this addition would be slightly inset from that, I think, from what I saw in the plans. That's why you're only asking for the five-feet encroachment. So it would be five feet off the property line.
Yes, I don't remember exactly why, when we were, we were working with the designer on the property and the layout, and we chose to bring it in a little bit because of the variance.
All right, thank you.
The reason we inset it...
You need to get your name and...
My name's Dwayne Smith. I'm Amy's father, and I've been working with her on this design. And the reason we set it in a foot and a half is because I thought it was six feet from the property line, and then when we applied for the permit, it was 10 feet. So that was the reason we had the designer bring it in a foot and a half to try to satisfy that requirement, and then realizing it was 10 feet.
Thank you. Could you give your address for the record, please, sir?
25 Cabot Drive.
Nashville?
Yes. I'm your neighbor.
Yes, okay, yeah. You are down the street. Anybody else with questions for the applicant? No, not seeing anybody? Is there anybody present with, else wants to speak in favor of the application? No? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody? So I will close the public hearing and open the public...
Actually, Mr. Chair, because I don't think we have, do we have a copy of that letter?
We do not, at least I don't.
I didn't get it.
I'm sorry. Or I can screen share it.
I think it might be helpful if we just got the names and addresses. Yeah, if you even could read the content. It looked like a very short kind of statement, and then just names and addresses of those that signed the letter.
Yep. It says, "I support approval by the Zoning Board for the variance of 44 Taylor Street. The owners, Adam and Amy Groff, are seeking a variance to build a 14-by-15 addition to the back of their home, which will encroach five feet on the 10-foot side yard setback. I believe the design proposed would not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and would match the existing residents." And we have Michael Clan from 44 Taylor Street. Sorry, I have a hard time reading some of these signatures. We have 41 Taylor Street, Amy from 28 Five Field Street, Eric Thomas from 24 Five Field Street, Larry Nutting from 22 Five Field Street, and Tom Ferran, no, from 25 Field Street.
Thank you.
Okay, and all right, so I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, any comments?
We, I'm in, overall, I'm in support of the application. I did a sidewalk before I got the package, and at first I was like, wow, that's a lot, you know, six, five feet into the 10-foot side yard setback. But when I went and looked, I said, oh, you know, I see what's going on here. There's this, you know, pretty long-standing house that's already six feet, and I appreciate the applicant offsetting the proposed new foundation, you know, a foot or foot and a half in to, you know, minimize as much, I think, as reasonable, the impact to the side yard setback. And I think they've thought out the, I appreciate the designs that they've done. I think they've thought through to make an attractive-looking proposal, attractive-looking addition. And I just wanted to say, a lot of the application, I don't think really speaks to the hardship that a Board looks at. It was speaking to their personal needs, which certainly I appreciate, but I think there is a longstanding, you know, hardship or special situation on the property, which is the house is already six feet into the 10-foot right side setback. So with that hardship, I'm in full support of it.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also in full support of the application for the reasons Mr. Courier states, and again, very clear that it's a long, narrow lot, and looking at any type of additions to their home to stay out of the setbacks and to achieve what they want to achieve, they'd probably be into the driveway a little bit and, you know, blocking the garage maybe. So again, I think it's reasonable, so I support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
Likewise, I think Mr. Courier and Mr. Boucher already covered the key things that I feel like are in play here, and I am in support of the application.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
I too am in support of the application for all the reasons my colleagues have mentioned.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I'm also in support of the application.
Mr. Mankara.
Well, I just note, the addition, I think, is reasonable, and for whatever reason, it seems that houses being built very close to one of the side lot lines seems to be common in this neighborhood.
Thank you. And I'm also in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you. With all of these tiles back and forth, I have to keep looking to see who's got their hand raised. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I can make a motion to approve the area variance for Amy and Adam Groff, 44 Taylor Street, Sheet 7, Lot 74, requesting a variance for Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, to encroach five feet into the 10-foot required right side yard setback to construct and attach 12-by-15-foot addition. It's in the RA Zone Ward 7. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, a very narrow lot, houses are already, as noted, this house is built already in the side setback and is somewhat atypical of the neighborhood. We find that it is within spirit, we find it is within the spirit and intent of the audience. We find it will not adversely affect property values or surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, I saw your hand first. Thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations, five to nothing. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. If you have any questions, please contact the Planning Department.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it very much.
Case number three. Owner Jeffrey Locke and Melissa Hopkins, address of 7 Green Lay Street, Sheet 138, Lot 48, requesting variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3... Sheet one thirty-eight, lot forty-eight, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three to encroach two foot nine inches into the ten-foot required right side yard setback to remove existing mudroom and garage and construct an attached two-story addition. This is in the R nine zone ward one. Uh, is there somebody here to present the case?
There, yes.
Hi, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Sure. This is Jeffrey and Melissa Locke at seven Green Lay Street, Nashville, so three oh six three.
Thank you. Proceed.
So thank you for your time. Um, so we're requesting an addition as stated. Um, we currently have a, a kind of undersized garage and mudroom, um, and current property. Uh, we have a young family, um, that keeps expanding. We had our third uh, late last year. And so, um, we need some more living space. And so we would like to tear down the existing garage and mudroom, um, and add a two-story addition. Currently, the, the existing um, structure is about eight feet um, to the setback. Um, this would bring it to about seven three, uh, seven feet, three inches. Um, we believe it would uh, not inversely impact the neighborhood. Um, and I think it'd make our house look uh, better. We did reach out to our neighbors who that, on that property line, and they did not have any objections or issue.
Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? Mr. Mankara.
I write in assuming when I look at the plans, that the roof line of the addition will line up with the roof line of the existing house?
Um, because our current uh, roof line is, is pretty narrow. Um, we're, we're opting for like a full, it'd be like a full um, size ceiling. So the roof line would be, would be above it, um, above the existing one. That way we, we maximize, we get a full, um, a full story as opposed to what we have at the rest of the house.
Any other questions from the board? Not seeing anybody. Um, is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Don't see anybody. Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody there. And then I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'm generally in favor of the application. Um, again, um, when I did the site visit, um, you, you know, you can't really tell until you actually look at the plot plan that, you know, um, there is um, the issue with the house. It, it follows the line of the street, but the side, the right side property line is, you know, it seems like an angle. So the house appears to be at an angle. When you look at the plot plan, when you visit the property, it doesn't seem to be a problem. So um, that kind of explains, you know, the slight incursion. Um, again, I, I think it's reasonable for the addition. And for what they need and what they're using for, um, it certainly makes sense, um, to put it on the right side of the house. So uh, again, with uh, the neighbor, uh, you know, with the, with the, with the applicant's testimony that the neighbor seems to be uh, in approval, there was no testimony against that. Uh, it's also on the same side of the property line, the neighbor has a garage there. So I, I don't think there's really any impact. Um, and I don't know if anybody would know that there is almost a three-foot incursion. So I support the application as it stands.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support, I think, also, you know, Mr. Boucher noted, uh, you know, the whole orientation thing. And uh, the fact is, it's only going to be a slightly uh, greater incursion than what already exists of the eight. Uh, that it's, there's already a two-foot incursion right now. Uh, since the back corner of the existing structure is only eight feet off the property line, uh, this is just an additional nine inches. Uh, and I think to avoid that, any, you know, to not go that slightly further incursion wouldn't make sense from a, a kind of a, a aesthetics perspective. And so I think uh, this is a very minimal uh, additional incursion uh, to what's already been existing for quite some time. And for those reasons and what Mr. Boucher already went through, I am in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
I too am in support of the application for, my colleagues have mentioned all the really supportive reasoning why this makes logical common sense.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara.
For the reasons stated.
Okay, you, we didn't hear your first couple of words.
Support the application for the reasons stated. No?
You unmute and then you're, I can see your mouth move, but the, the, the sound doesn't come through. Okay, yes, he's, he's in support of the application.
I was just gonna say, I think uh, Mr. Mankara's got a, like, maybe a lag between video and audio.
Yeah, that could be. Mr. Kanakas.
I'm also in support of the variance for the reasons given by the board.
Okay, and uh, I, uh, I'm also in support of the application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Courier?
No, I just, I, I solicit my comments, uh, but I just wanted to say I'm in support of the application for the reasons my colleagues.
Did I, did I miss you? I, my apologies. You're right, I did miss you. Okay, okay. I have this list and, and I, I tried not, not to do it in the same order every time, so um, keep you on your toes. Keep me on my toes. Okay, now, uh, Mr. Shaw would like to make a motion, right?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is for case number three. Owners Jeffrey Locke and Melissa Hopkins at seven Green Lay Street. Um, this is a sheet one thirty-eight, lot forty-eight, request is for a variance from land use code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three to encroach two feet, nine inches into the ten-foot required right side yard setback to remove an existing mudroom and garage and construct an attached two-story addition. This is in the R nine zone. Uh, the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, uh, given the special conditions of the property. Uh, a key aspect of that is that the orientation, while it looks to be parallel from the street, uh, the actual um, plot itself uh, is angled from the street. And so there is a, basically an offset or an angle between the property lines and the orientation of the existing house itself. Also, the existing structure, uh, because it's not set quite as far back as the proposed replacement structure, uh, still actually has an incursion of about, it looks to be about two feet into the, um, into that right side yard setback. So this is a fairly small additional incursion uh, to the setback. And the uh, the location, this is really the kind of most reasonable place for uh, the applicant to go with this addition. Uh, so there's no other reasonable means for them to uh, to pursue other than this variance. It will be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Uh, there's no indication of any adverse effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. Uh, for those reasons, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. McKay, thank you for your second. Uh, okay, any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Uh, and I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Uh, congratulations, five to nothing. Your variance has been approved. Uh, please be aware, as I said earlier, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. If you have any questions, uh, please contact Mr. Falk at the planning department.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to recognize Kate Poirier. She was very helpful with me navigating this process. So thank you very much, Kate.
She, she's helpful to all of us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to case number four. And uh, I think, yeah, Mr. Mankara said he was, uh, uh, who's recusing themselves to do this? You're recusing on yourself. Okay, so, you know, turn off, yeah, very good, turn off your camera, okay. So I see his memories going. Case number four. Owner John Gergos, applicant is major in Paquette Engineering, address is thirty-seven Lovewell Street. Sheet ninety-six, lot one oh seven, requesting following variances from land use code section one ninety sixteen, table sixteen dash three, uh, lot, lot one oh seven, number one, minimum lot frontage fifty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. Second variance is minimum lot width sixty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. And for lot one oh eight, uh, minimum lot frontage fifty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. And minimum lot width sixty feet required, forty-nine point five six proposed, feet proposed to reestablish original lot lines created in eighteen eighty and construct new single-family house on lot one oh seven. This is in the RB zone ward six. So uh, who's here to present this case?
Richard Maynard.
Okay, Attorney Mayor, uh, Mr. Maynard, do you continue?
I'm not an, I'm not attorney, I'm an engineer.
You're an engineer, sorry, my mistake, yeah.
No problem. For the record, my name is Richard Maynard, a licensed professional engineer with Maynard Paquette Engineering, representing the property owner and applicant, John Gergos. Property of concern is located at thirty-seven Lovewell Street in the RB zone. The lots in this entire neighborhood were created by HCRD Plan number one thirty-one dash one, back in the eight, late eighteen hundreds. The plan essentially created several block neighborhood of lots with fifty feet of frontage and one hundred to one hundred and thirty feet of depth. Several blocks uh, by this, if you can see from the GIS maps. In December of two thousand and four, some seventeen years ago, the owner, the then owner voluntarily merged lot one oh seven and one oh eight into one lot. Our client would like to undo this merger and reestablish the lots as they were originally established and existed for decades. It'd be noted that the current owner, John Gergos, in August two thousand and twenty, was beaded two lots per his deed that, which is an HCRD book ninety-three seventy-four, page eighteen seventy-four. So he was beaded two lots. In order to reestablish these original two lots, we need variances for frontage and lot width. Each lot has forty-nine point five six feet of frontage where fifty feet is required and forty-nine and a half feet of lot width where sixty feet is required. Examination of the Nashville GIS map, especially along Gilman Street, would show that most of the lots are non-conforming and most are fifty feet of frontage by one hundred to one hundred and thirty feet of, of, of depth. Same as we proposed to reestablish at our client's location. Reestablishing these two lots back to their original configuration would not be contrary to the public interest because the reestablished lots would be essentially the same as those that existed previously and, and the same as the majority of the lots in the neighborhood. The spirit of the ordinance would be met since the proposed frontage of forty-nine and a half feet is very close to the fifty-foot requirement. And, and the proposed lot width of sixty feet is the same as most of the lots in the neighborhood. Substantial justice would be done as it would allow these lots to be utilized just the same way as many of the, of his neighbors. The proposed lots would conform to the character of the neighborhood. Those new house would be very similar to what already exists in the neighborhood. In addition, new construction in the neighborhood tends to enhance property values. There we go. So in summary, the request is to void the voluntary merger and reestablish the original lots, lot lines. The lots would be now conformed to and be in character within majority of the existing lots in, existing in the neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Mr. Courier.
Um, why would, uh, I'm not that familiar with voluntary lot mergers. Why would an owner want to do that and to do that?
A voluntary merger saves you tax money because you don't have another lot to tax. And so people are enticed to merge them together so they get one reduced tax bill. And they only get taxed on one lot or if they have two lots. It's a, between you and I, they gave, they give up a lot of value when they let go of a lot and a lot's already merged. But so it's strict, strictly to save property taxes.
Okay, and I guess, uh, i- unless I'm seeing this wrong, uh, I certainly in eighteen ninety, it looked like all those lots were intended to be fifty feet wide-ish. Uh, but a- as, as I look at the application and did a site walk, it seems like on Lovewell Street, there, like, every property is, is twice as wide as the eighteen ninety one. Am I seeing that right or am I got that wrong?
Partially correct. Not all of them have doubled up, uh, as I remember. I don't have that plan in front of me right this moment. But yeah, several of them have taken and doubled up on, taken through the original lots and made one larger lot. Yes, correct. But if you look to the rear of the property and to the other parts of the neighborhood, you'll see that the majority, you know, if not most, are fifty by hundred and something lots. So they're all fifty foot wide, uh, especially to the upper left of the lot on, uh, I forget the name of that street, whatever that street is. You look at the.
I think it's Gilman Street, uh, to the.
On Gilman Street, uh, just about every lot is, is fifty to a hundred except one, so. And the rest on our, our side of Lovewell Street are, are a little bit of a mishmash, but you can see that most of them are still narrow. So, and, and they reflect the, what was originally subdivided by the, the eighteen ninety plan that recorded it to register.
Yeah, I guess, um, do you, do you have any feel for the other lots on Lovewell? Have they been merged or have none of those been merged?
Any of those lots, they have to have been merged, uh, Mr. Courier. The bigger ones are merged. The ones that aren't big are, are the original subdivided lots.
Okay, cause I was just struggling with the idea of like, uh, a homeowner merges a lot. You know, I, I think, I, I, it seems makes sense to me. You'd save a lot on taxes, but then you unmerge them and uh, well, I don't know, uh, just, yeah, uh, I'm, my questions are answered, so I'm all set for now. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the board? Uh, Mr. Mankara.
Um, would all, uh, would, would all the buildings and structures on, on the existing lot conform with setbacks after subdivision?
A existing house on, on the left-hand lot line, away from the new proposed lots, would not conform. It's in the setback or it's just on the setback, excuse me. You see our, our thing called the zoning plan, that represents the existing house. So the house is right on top of the setback. The shed in the rear, um, doesn't, doesn't respect setbacks.
Okay.
Does that, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You know, I, I have a question. Oh, Mr. Falk, you have a comment?
I was just gonna say, even though the shed is in the, um, within the side and your setback, it's not being made any more non-conforming by that. So they wouldn't require any relief from the board for either the house or the shed, or the shed.
Yeah, the, that diagram that was just shown, it looked like there was a set of stairs that just peeked into the setback. Was that, is that what I'm looking at? Yeah.
That conforms. You're allowed to approach it to the setback.
Okay, very good. Um, I assume that if the variances are granted, that you also then have to go to the planning board and have them divide the lot. Is that correct?
Yes. It, it has to get a subdivision approval from the planning board.
All right, I, I was just, was wondering what the process was. Thank you. That's all I have. Any more questions from the board? Not seeing anybody. Okay, uh, is there anybody present who wish to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? And I'm not seeing anybody either. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Uh, Mr. Shaw, do you have comments?
I guess I'm primarily inclined to support this, uh, given the history of the neighborhood, uh, the history of these lots. Uh, this is not, does not feel to me like something where you have all existing large kind of double. Uh, this is not, does not feel to me like something where you have all existing large kind of double lots, uh, or, and that are just down, somebody's trying to squeeze two into, uh, a location. So there's, there's a long history here. Uh, so I think the fact that the, it's only the shed right now that's non-conforming anyhow, uh, if we are to grant this variance. Um, I, again, I, I'm generally in, in support. I'm interested to hear what my colleagues have to say, but that's where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarron, comments?
So I, I, I'm actually struggling with this one. Uh, on the one hand, subdividing it back to, uh, the dimensions of the original approved plan seemed reasonable. However, um, it, it really, the current lot is really fairly consistent with the other lots on the street. So it's not as though this lot stands out unusually. Most of the lots appear to be double-wide, uh, at least on the street itself. Um, and I, um, so I, I'm struggling with, so, so given the fact that the lot itself doesn't appear to be particularly unusual, I'm struggling with how a owner's decision to voluntary merge these lots has now created a hardship from which the owner needs relief. Uh, but I'm happy to hear other thoughts.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Thank you. Um, pretty much, I think I'm in support. And I think one of the reasons is that this city, um, when this owner took possession or purchased, he was presented with two deeds, not one. So the city recognizes that, at least on some level, as two lots. And for that, I mean, somebody just voluntarily did this. They didn't, you know, do it so that they would change a deed. They just said, okay, this works out better for me, and I'm going to do this. But the city never changed how it recorded the two pieces of property independently. And so I think for that reason, um, and for the reason that, you know, that's how it was initially established, um, I'm leaning in support of this application.
Yeah, I, I believe it's actually the county that, that registers the deeds. The city doesn't get involved with that.
Okay, well, regardless, he has two deeds.
Yeah. Mr. Falk, do you have a, a comment on that?
Uh, not really. I mean, it was originally platted with the two lots, and they may have had two deeds, and the, uh, owner some years ago decided to, you know, as, uh, Mr. Maynard said, they combined it into one, and their, uh, ideas for the property have changed, and now they'd like to have it back to the original configuration.
Yeah. So when that, that, um, merging is done, that, that doesn't, that, that doesn't require a, a new deed to be created and registered with the county?
Uh, I don't know off the top of my head.
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair, that's all. It does, yes.
Okay. So that tells me that when Mr. Gergos bought the property, that he would have had one deed for the, the combined lot, not two deeds.
Um, that, that is correct. It's very common to see one deed referencing two parcels or tracks.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Courier, your comments?
Deal to the applicant, please.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I, we're in the, we're in the public meeting. I'm not really supposed to take, uh, comments from the applicant, but we, if, if we find it necessary, we might reopen the public hearing and, and get some more information. Um, Mr. Courier, your comments?
Um, well, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the application. I mean, just a point on that, the two deeds, I mean, that form in our packet was also dated two thousand and four. So I, I was reading that, that that's what it was in two thousand and four, when the former owner decided to merge it. In my mind, the current owner was blatantly aware that it's one lot because he's only gonna, he's only paying taxes on one lot. And, and I, 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 I guess I see it as Jay does. It's, I mean, the former owner merged it, the current owner buys it fully where it's merged, and that county deed of two thousand and four showing two lots, to me, isn't persuasive to say there's a hardship that it should be separated. And that combined with, you know, when we say neighborhood, you know, what's the definition of a neighborhood? Certainly on Gil, Gilman or Gilson Street, there's the fifty-foot wide lots, but on Lovewell, uh, they're all wider. At least, uh, I, I didn't go all the way down the street, but what I consider the immediate neighborhood is all wider. So I'm struggling with the application at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
I'm, 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 I'm going to support the application. Um, I, I believe that, um, the lots, uh, when divided, would, would be in character with the neighborhood and perform to what is practically there. I, I think, you know, um, by looking at the, um, the topography map of the area, I mean, you can see that the lots in the back would be just a mirror image of that. Um, I do believe that, um, you know, what I see on Gilman Street and, um, some other areas in, in the area, both, um, in both directions, um, would indicate to me that, that this would be, you know, would not be out of character for the neighborhood. And furthermore, I don't, I do not see enough here for myself to have enough reason to deny the application. Um, so with that, uh, I'm going to support the application.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Shaw, did I ask you for your comments? I've lost track.
Yes, I was first.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I thought so. Okay. Um, yeah, I'm kind of, I'm on the fence about this. Um, especially because, uh, as noted, the, when the current owner bought it, it was a, uh, a single lot. And he knew it was a single lot. Um, I recognize that on the street behind, that there are, uh, quite a few of the existing narrow, uh, the earlier narrow lots. On Lovewell Street, not so much. Um, and Mr. McCarron's comment about the hardship, um, and there, there is, there is no hardship. Um, you know, it's a, a case of wanting to sell off the, the, the other, uh, the other part of it. So I'm really struggling with this myself. Um, any other, uh, comments from the board? Anybody else want to speak again? Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not so convinced, uh, of, of my support. I especially appreciated Mr. McCarron's point there and some of the rest of, some of the other commentary. So, um, I also think I was maybe thinking too much about the larger neighborhood. And again, when you look at Lovewell itself, uh, there isn't really this sense of these only narrow lots. So if anything, we'll, I guess, in a way, tend to, 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 I think I made the argument the other way earlier, and I don't think it was a very accurate argument. So, um, so I'm, but I, I'm definitely, this is a, a tough one, but I, I, I think, uh, there was this, you know, the, the lots were merged, and now we're kind of looking at, I mean, quite frankly, in one sense, you know, I find it a little bit troubling, too, that it was a merger of lots to save taxes, and now, uh, there's a benefit being sought to, you know, gain the financial benefit of, of having two lots. And so to me, there's, I realize that in, in of itself isn't, isn't necessarily an issue, and that's something we, we act on per se. But the, the, um, the lot has been able to be enjoyed as a single lot and, and the benefits that came with that. Uh, and now we do have to, um, I guess, leave a hardship that was created by the, the property owner previously. So, so yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I can support this after all. I still wondering if there's any further discussion.
Is there rebuttal testimony allowed?
Not at this point. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll just, maybe, I'm just gonna say the same thing over again, but, um, um, again, I, I understand that this was something that was done by a previous owner. Um, I think that through what I, I've tried to educate myself on and look at, and, you know, and, and, um, current, um, documentation or whatever through, uh, office engine and planning and stuff, and new cases that have been out there. In general, I, I think that, um, this, for me, I, I believe that this is being looked at and maybe a little bit differently. So, again, you know, we talk about, um, variances needed for the applicant's proposed use of property. So the, the applicant, um, bought the property, um, and is looking to subdivide that, obviously. Um, and obviously to build another home and, and, and whatever the, the purpose is. What I guess I'm getting at is, um, to, you know, to, to have the bar to deny the application, um, it, it goes beyond what, you know, what I think I would believe I would want in the neighborhood if I lived there, or what, 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 what they're looking at. So, again, um, I'm looking at from the other side. What's the bar to deny the application, um, especially when there have been cases, you know, there's some case law I'm sure out there, but I've read some references, and I wish I had some references, but I don't. I just, talking in general, what I've, what I've looked at and what I've read, um, this is returning, yes, back to what it was before, and it's still not, not complying to today's standards. But again, returning to the property to what it was in two thousand and four, or whatever year it was. Um, if that previous owner had never, um, had never merged lots, um, and had sold the property, uh, we, um, you know, would look at, we would see this in a different light. So, um, again, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that I guess I just, I'm struggling to, um, get over the bar of what it would take to deny the application. I understand, um, you know, what my fellow members have said about uh, their reasoning for denial, um, uh, with the, with the, with Lovewell Street having more of the double lots. Uh, but I think there's a lot of credibility to what it was before, what's existing and what is still existing. And, you know, we can all define what neighborhood is, and, you know, we all have our, our view on that. I really look at, the neighborhood to me is that whole, it's not just the street, it's the, the, that section of, of Nashville, those, you know, I'm not going by blocks, but that really, that, that, that section in looking at what, what that is and what exists there. And, um, so with that, I know it probably, um, didn't change anybody's mind, but, um, again, I'm just looking at uh, what it would take to, uh, deny the application in my mind.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I, I just wanted to throw out to the board that if we were, if these lots had never been merged, I believe this variance would still be before us for the lot widths. And we've seen an awful lot of requests, and I think the board has pretty much approved them because back in the day, whenever that was, eighteen eighty or eighteen ninety, that's what these were cut up. And since then, you know, the rather current zoning doesn't permit that. To me, that's a very reasonable hardship that I would be in support of, but with the merged lot, but, you know, it, it's, it's a different situation for me, anyway. I just wanted to get that out, that if it were not merged, I'd certainly be in support of it.
Further comments? Okay. Tell you what, let's have somebody make a motion to approve the variance, variances, all of them, all four of them. Um, and we'll see where that goes, and if it fails, then we'll have another, uh, motion to deny the variances. Does that, is that agreeable to the board? Okay. Uh, would somebody...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I guess the way I'm reading right now is that there's not support for the application unless I'm misreading that. So I don't know if, if really that's, I, I'm just trying to save a little bit of time, I guess, but I, I don't know if there's support. I'd be, I'd be more than happy to make the, uh, motion to, to approve, but I don't know if we, if there's actually a support, and I'd rather have somebody make a motion to deny if, if we believe there's not a majority of support, but maybe I'm misreading the board.
You might be.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll volunteer to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the area variance for, uh, John Gergos, owner, Richard Maynard, Maynard and Pocket Engineering Associates, applicant of thirty-seven Lovewell Street, sheet ninety-six, lot one oh seven, requesting the following variances for land use code, section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three, lot one oh seven, minimum lot frontage fifty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. Uh, two, minimum lot width sixty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. And for lot one oh eight, uh, minimum lot frontage fifty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed. And four, for minimum lot width sixty feet required, forty-nine point five six feet proposed to reestablish original lot lines created in eighteen eighty and construct new single-family house on lot one oh seven in the RB zone, word six. Uh, we find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property. Given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue than, than the area variance. Um, the approvers of this, um, um, uh, this motion, uh, believe that, um, that these, that there is credibility in, uh, the original, uh, layout and design of the, of this, um, neighborhood area, and that there are several, um, lots that, um, are, uh, akin or are the same as what is being proposed in, in the lot width and depth, in depth and on, um, on Lovewell Street, and also on Gilman Street and the surrounding, uh, neighborhood, which encompasses, uh, the streets behind and, and to the east and west and north and south. So, uh, we also find that it is within the spare intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. McKay, thank you. Uh, any discussion of the motion? All right. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Uh, Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
I'll vote not in favor.
And I, Mr. O'Connell, I vote in favor. Um, that's three to two. The variance passes. Um, these variances, all four of them pass. Um, please be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. Uh, contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have questions, and good luck at the planning board. You're, you're muted, Mr. Maynard, but, uh, I'll, uh, goodbye. Yeah. Okay. Moving on to case number five. And we have Mr. Kanakis back. I don't suppose, uh, Ms. Boras has joined us.
Yeah.
Not yet. Okay, thank you. Now, if, if you, if you see her show up, please ping me on chat or something like that so I know, because otherwise I won't see it. Thank you. Case number five, owners, Hassan and Zainob Joffrey, address seven Owl's Head Drive, sheet H lot five eighty-six, requesting variance from land use code section one ninety dash thirty-one to encroach four foot, three inches into the six-foot required right-side yard setback to construct a sixteen-foot by nineteen-foot carport, carport. This is in the R nine, R forty zone, word two. Uh, somebody here to present the case?
Yes, Hassan Joffrey here from seven Owl's Head Drive in Nashville.
Okay.
All right. So let me just describe, describe what you want to do here. So, um, uh, so we have lived in this house for about ten years, and we used to park our vehicles in, uh, in a garage, but over... But over time, the garage filled up with, you know, snow blower and lawn mower and everything else. So now we park our vehicles outside the garage to the to the right side, right next to the adjoining property. Now, the issue is that, you know, like in the winter, you know, snow falls on it. And my my wife, she's a physician, and she happens to have this thing called Raynaud syndrome. So your blood vessels are narrow, spend, there's too cold. So she has problem, you know, removing snow from her vehicle when she's driving in the morning. So if you decided to put a, if you want to put a carport in that location to be park our vehicles, there's one thing with carports, so it's prefabricated, so it's not being built up from the ground. So it's a prefabricated structure. The only thing we have to do is put these two posts in the center and, you know, mount these these butterflies of roof on top of the on top of these posts. So this is what you're trying to do. So keep the vehicle, keep the snow in, you know, off the vehicles primarily in winter. Now, why we want to put it, you know, within the six feet of the setback, it's six feet from the adjoining property. You want to put it at one feet, nine inches. And the reason really is that if you put it, you know, let's say six feet, it sort of protrudes into the garage in front of a garage. And it kind of blocks the entrance to the garage, and also it blocks entrance to the backyard. And you see this area between the house and the adjoining property, we park a trailer over there, so to block access to that area for the trailer, if you if you put it, you know, at least six feet from the adjoining property. So that's one reason. And secondly, if we put it in this location, you know, about two feet from the adjoining property, then it's kind of hidden from, you know, the street, street, because there's a large, like, dogwood tree right next to it, between the street and this carport. So it's going to be hidden from the from the street. And also, on the other side, the adjoining property has a line of car varieties along the property line. So it's going to be mostly invisible from the neighbors and and the street view. Now, we did ask our neighbor, who's who's right next door, if they're fine with it, and they have they have no issue with it, and she, I can tell you why she texted me about it. So she, when she got the notification for the better notification, she told me, hi Hassan, I got noticed about the hearing. I'm not planning to attend, since I have no objection. So they're fine with it. Yeah, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. McCarran?
I just wanted the applicant to explain how it drains. It seems that the drainage goes towards the middle. Kind of then what happens?
Right. So there's no, there's no gutter or downspout for it. It just goes in the center and just comes down, rolls down the post, really. So, yeah, so the water is just going to fall right on the, you know, from the center area, right on the on the ground.
And then where does the water go?
So where it goes right now, I guess, you know, it's, so we have a pretty level driveway. So it's, you know, it goes in the lawn part of it, I guess, part of it goes in the street also.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Courier?
I just wondering if you could clarify. At first, I thought you'd be driving straight, like, along the property line, but now I I think the proposed idea is that you'd be driving, like, straight towards the Arbor Vitae's and parking the car, like, perpendicular to the right-side property line, but I wasn't sure of how the cars are intended to be parked in the proposed carport, which direction?
That is correct, because that's how we park our cars even right now. We just park in that spot, facing the Arbor Vitae's, you know, without the carport on top of it. So this is where we park our cars right now, even.
All right. I mean, just to get back to the previous question, it seems like there's a slight downhill grade. And I say that because it was, it's kind of like going uphill on Owl's Owl's Head Drive. So I'm assuming that the water would be running off, like, onto the Arbor Vitae's versus onto the front of the off the front of the proposed.
Well, but the structure is erected, it's supposed to be totally leveled. So it won't be following the grade of the ground if it's, there's an incline over there. Now, if it's if it's causing damage to our variety, I mean, we can obviously block it. I'm not sure that would be the case right now, because the water should fall on our property before, you know, it's not in the Arbor Vitae's, though, on our property. The Arbor Vitae's are on the neighbor's property, by the way. It's not our property there. But if it's an issue with the neighbor, you know, it's hurting the Arbor Vitae, we can, you know, obviously block it so it comes towards the house, not towards the neighbor's property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions for the applicant? Ah, there is Ms. Boras. I've not seen any more questions from the board. Anybody present wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Okay, not seeing anybody. We'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, do you have comments?
I'm not all that particularly. The only comment maybe is the design is is really futuristic in in some respects. Is there, I don't know if there's a reason for that, or, you know, but it's a carport, and I completely understand the woman's desire not to be rained on or snowed on. And so with that, I I can't find much to disagree with it. So I'm probably in support of this application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
If you like, I can add one.
Yeah. How about you? You wait until we just have the comments from the board, and then you can make some additional comments. Okay, get everything done at once. Mr. Courier?
I guess there is a question. I guess I wish I had asked the applicant. Maybe we'll finally have the opportunity to, but the idea of trying to mitigate incursions into, you know, for variance requests, when it dawned on me till just a few moments ago, but, you know, the application speaks that the existing garage is kind of filled with other items. But one thought that comes to mind is, hey, just a, you know, traditional garden shed. Could that be utilized to store the items? We see an awful lot of that in Nashua. And and then there wouldn't would not be an incursion into the side yard setback. I appreciate the butter not being, you know, being in support of the application, but I I'm feeling it's out of character with the neighborhood and that it could be remedied just with, like, a traditional storage shed that wouldn't be in the setback. But that's where I'm at at the moment.
Other questions from the board? Yeah, I I'm sort of along with Mr. Courier in that, you know, there's a perfectly good garage there. Why not use it for its intended purpose? So, Mr. Joffrey, do you have a couple minutes to respond to the comments that the board has made?
Yes. So regarding the garage use, so we already have a shed, yes, and it's too small to, it's actually, it's actually, you know, sitting at one feet, nine inches from the adjoining property. That's in part why we proposed that the carport replaced at the same distance. But the shed is kind of small, and it's already, you know, full, it contains the fertilizers and, you know, lawn equipment and so on and so forth. So and and getting a larger shed, yeah, we don't have space for that, because the shed is right now sitting to a vegetable garden, and that would have to be moved, you know, further down the behind the property to get a bigger shed. So that's really the reason we cannot use the garage right now. And that's also about the design of the carport. So we picked this design because it's kind of minimalist. So, you know, it doesn't have the walls and so on and so forth, just, you know, two posts and carrying, you know, and has a roof on top. So it's futuristic, but it's also kind of minimalist. It's translucent, the roof is translucent, so that's light through, about 20% light through also. So the reason we picked this is that, you know, it's minimalist, it's kind of hidden behind, you know, the trees and everything, and neighbors are fine with it. So and, you know, if we, you know, we can still put it in a six feet from the property line, but then it becomes more, you know, sort of intrusive in the sense that it comes in front of the house, kind of sort of blocks the house, and, you know, is very visible from the street also. So all these reasons combined, you know, for us to propose this variance.
Okay, I do note that the city mentions that you did not get a permit or variance for your existing shed.
That I don't know, because it was, when you bought the house, it was there, and we saw in the city GIS map, this shows a structure over there. So I believe that somebody, the previous owner or the builder, they get a variance for that. But, yeah, we bought the house the way it is right now. Yeah, we didn't build a shed in that place.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? Mr. Shaw, did you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm feeling very confused right now. Are we still in the public hearing? I thought we went through.
You're right, we did.
And then you brought the applicant back in.
That was my my error. Thank you for pointing that out. We are not in the public hearing. We're in the public meeting. I'm going to need a break after this. Okay. So no more comments from the board, because we're asking comments, not questions for the applicant, right?
Well, actually, we didn't go through everybody either.
We didn't go with, you're right, we didn't go through everybody, so we'll continue. Oh, boy. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I guess I'm I'm struggling with this. I mean, I think I, you know, yeah, it's a minimalist, kind of more modern type of design, and I think there are benefits of something like that, you know. But I guess I, you know, and I appreciate what the applicant's trying to do. I guess I'm, I am nonetheless struggling with the actual needs specifically to go into the side yard setback. And so that's kind of my struggle on this right now. So I want to hear what others have to say, but that's where I'm at.
Okay. Mr. Kanakis?
I think I agree. I'm struggling in that there's a perfectly good solution in that the garage exists there. Parking in that would seem to solve the issues with getting out in the cold and rain, and a shed in conformance with the city code could be built in the backyard, it seems, to hold the equipment that's being stored in the garage. I'm having trouble reaching the hardship criteria on this one.
Thank you. Mr. McCarran?
I I would agree with the prior comments. I it does appear as other other locations where a shed could be built, the garage could be used. But but I am also concerned that this is an unusual structure, unfamiliar to me, but it appears to concentrate the drainage in the center of the structure. And depending on how this thing drains, I am concerned that being only 1.9 feet from the neighbor's property line, that that, you know, the drainage from the structure could cause erosion, could cause an impact to the neighboring property.
Thank you. Yeah. My my feeling is is that there's no real hardship here, that there is a garage that can be used for the purpose, and a shed of the size of the, you know, close to the size of the proposed garage could be built. You know, the owner might need a variance for setbacks, but that's not before us right now. But I'm, at this point, I'm not in favor of the application. So let's see. What's the sense of the board? I think I heard at least two full board members, other than myself, not in favor. So I'm going to suggest that we have a motion to deny. Mr. Courier?
I was just, in your thought on what to do, like, thinking of the last case, I I thought it was fine to go with a motion first to pass and see what happens for the benefit of the applicant. And so I just wanted to throw, if you wanted to go in that direction, I'd be fine with that, or go with deny. It's your choice, but I was okay with your last choice on the last case, and just wanted to get that out more anyway. So.
Okay. All right. So we'll do that. We'll make a, have somebody make a motion to approve. Who would like to do that? Okay, I've not seen hands. That suggests to me that we don't have support for approval, so I'm now going to ask for a motion to deny. Would somebody care to make that motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I make a motion on behalf of the owners Hassan and Zainub Joffrey, at 7 Owl's Head Drive, Sheet H Lot 586. The request is for variance from land use code, Section 190-31, to encroach four feet, three inches into the six-foot required right-side yard setback to construct a 16-foot by 19-foot carport, this in the R9/R40 zone. The board does not believe that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property in that there are no given special conditions of the property. This appears to be primarily a matter of usage of parking and storage that could be still accomplished by other reasonable means. The board especially noted the ability to perhaps construct a larger shed. The fact that this carport is proposed to encroach into the side yard setback is not viewed to be a reasonable need, so therefore it's not within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication one way or the other regarding any effects on surrounding parcel property values. It wouldn't be in the public interest, and substantial justice would not be served. And for those reasons, I move to deny.
Do I have a second? Mr. Courier, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the denial.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
I vote in favor of the denial.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor of the denial.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial.
And I, Mr. Lionel, I also vote in favor of the denial. It's four to one. I'm sorry, your variance was not, was denied. And there is a 30-day window of appeal. You can request a rehearing. Please contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you wish to do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. At this point, we want to take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 8:10, and see you then. Okay, it's 8:10. The person who's calling in from 561-493-9895, please mute, because there's terrible feedback.
I am muted. I don't want to start bothering my phone. I think it's muted now, isn't it?
No, we can hear you. And is this feedback?
Does that make any difference? Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, but you can also hear an echo.
Can you hear me now?
That's worse.
She is saying mute, not mute. I don't know what to do about it.
You you are, you're calling, you have both a computer attached and you're calling on a phone, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
You you need to. You need to turn the speakers off of one of them. Well, that's one way to handle it.
Can you hear me now?
Can, yes.
Okay, we got rid of the noise last time.
Yes, we did. All right, we will continue. Case number six, owner is Lorna Saunders, address is 9 Ryan Way, Sheet G, Lot 7, requesting variance from land use code section 190-44 to exceed six foot maximum fence height, eight feet proposed for a 40 foot long section along the left side of the house. This is in the R18 zone, Ward 2. Is there somebody here to present the case? I see Lorna Saunders there. You need to unmute, though. You need to find.
Okay, do you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you now.
All right.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Lorna Saunders, 9 Ryan Way. And that's part of Heathwood Metal Condominiums.
Okay.
Okay, and this request actually, originally I was going to request 40 foot fence, but now it's really only 32. When Gate City came out to measure, it just looked like 40 was way too much. So now it would consist really of three eight foot sections and then one, what they call a transition. And it's really kind of like a slope. And there are a few other houses, there's 47 houses in all in this detached condo association. And I believe there are about three or four other houses that have this exact same fence. So I'm trying to keep everything the same and, you know, come up with continuity as far as the type of fence. So, you know, the main reason that I wanted to have it is because of privacy. As you can see from the photo, there's about 24 feet in between my neighbor and myself. And he has a small child and a dog. And when I'm sitting on my deck, I mean, you know, we can, there's no privacy whatsoever. So basically, it would act as privacy for me and safety for him and his family. And we discuss it and he is totally in favor of it and wants it. I guess, basically, what I'm trying to do is like, I think it would beautify, see now that's the other side of my property and you can see that somebody actually has a fence there. And it's the exact same fence where he has two sections in that transition, but mine would be one more section in that transition. And the fence is actually like 56 feet off of the road. So it's not going to really bother anybody as far as an obstruction to traffic or anything like that. So basically, you know, it's as simple as that. And I really do think that it will beautify the property and other people that have fences. I mean, I really think that it's increased the value. Like I said, I mean, I've spoken with neighbors and they're all in favor of it. And I believe that if this is passed, that he will actually probably request a variance to have a fence put on the other side of his house, too, so that he can also have like a little privacy. So I would have Gate City fence install it, so it would be installed professionally and, you know, look nice and not just thrown up. So I guess that's really kind of it. I mean, I'm just looking to replicate what is on the right hand side of my house and put it on the left hand side. And, you know, in that also maintain like a little privacy when I'm on my deck and safety for his child and his dog and privacy for him as well. So that's basically all that I have.
Thank you. I do have a question. What is the reason for requesting the eight foot height?
Well, all of the other properties that have fences, they are eight feet. And for continuity purposes, plus my deck is, it's up a little bit. So if I'm sitting on my deck and I have a six foot fence, I'm probably going to be able to look over it. So I think with the eight foot, that it just gives me that much more added privacy.
Okay, thanks. Mr. McCarron.
Question, I guess probably more appropriately for staff, but did the other eight foot fences in this development receive variances?
You muted.
Sorry about that. I don't remember any other variances unless they were more than 22 or 23 years ago.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Just a question for the applicant. When Kate was showing the picture, it's in our application of the fence that's on the other side of the applicant's house. I was just wondering if the applicant could clarify whether that's a six foot fence or an eight foot fence?
It's eight feet.
Okay. And the other question I have is in our application, there's an email, I think it's maybe from Shelley Gullett, but I, just to clarify, is it your testimony that that email serves as the condo association giving approval for an eight foot fence?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the board with questions? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? No? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, do you have comments?
Well, I guess if, you know, in relying on the applicant's testimony that given the height of her deck, it looks, I don't know, it looks maybe to be two, two feet or so off the ground. There's not a clear picture of it. I mean, the applicant is testifying that the eight feet is needed for privacy from the deck. And also the fact that the fence begins 10 feet behind the house. I don't think it's going to be obtrusive to the neighborhood. It's really to, going to be just seen by the two properties that, you know, it's in between. So I guess I struggled a little with the need for the eight foot fence versus the six foot fence. But the applicant's saying that it's needed for the privacy. So, you know, I'm not, you know, I think I'm okay with it. I'm certainly open to hear the other board's members. And also speaking about the hardship, I guess I'm just looking for more input from the board on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I, I'll just say that I support it. Again, the way I'm looking at this is that this fence is between two homes for a short section, 40 plus feet from the roadway, as testified and as we saw through the, what, you know, the pictures we saw. This fence is not going up on any rear property lines. It's not affecting any of the budding neighbors to this condo association. Additionally, again, this is a unique, well, it's not unique, but it's unique in a way that I think it's the first time I've been involved with a case where there's a fence of this height asked for in a condo, in a condo condominiumized, you know, neighborhood. So, you know, obviously, there's approval from the condo association. There is testimony, and when I drove through, I did see other fences that were at that height, a few other ones. And I'm sure there's some up the road on the next one. So again, it seems to be typical of what they're accepting within their complex. And I think that that in itself, being confined and withheld inside that property and because the property is so big and the units are condensed more to the, near the road and not spread out. I really think that it's really negligible to me, the way I look at it. And again, I don't see any detriment or any reason why I would deny the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I'm in support of it. I think, actually, Mr. Boucher, I really appreciate the points you just made. I think you captured it very well and I really concur with what Mr. Boucher said. So I think, yeah, I'm good with this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I think Mr. Boucher swayed me as well. He's fairly consistent with the neighborhood. And my understanding, someone else on the board can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think the height limit in the ordinance is to prevent spite fences and things like that. And that doesn't seem to be the case here. Mutual agreement between the neighbors and the condo association with the height of the fence. So I think I can support this one.
Thank you. Mr. McCarron.
For me, I just don't see any special conditions in the property that warrant the variance. The distance between the homes is not particularly small. 24 feet is fairly substantial, more than setbacks would be required. Decks are usually upraised, that's kind of the nature of a deck. So I just didn't hear anything that said that there were any special conditions that would give rise to a variance.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm actually in support of the application for all of the reasons expressed by my colleagues, especially how JP Mucho actually spelt everything out for us. So I am in support.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
I too am in support for all the aforementioned reasons.
And I am also in support mainly because there are existing fences of similar size and construction already there in the development. I think it would actually be worse to have one that's lower than the other fences. I, we have, you know, I certainly recognize Mr. McCarron's comment about what's the, you know, what's the special condition, but I would say the special condition is it seems to be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. So I would support that. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Lorna Saunders, owner of 9 Ryan Way, Sheet G, Lot 7, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-44 to exceed six foot maximum fence height to eight feet proposed for a 40 foot long section along left side house. The applicant has revised that to 32 feet. It's in the R18 zone, Ward 2. And we find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, this home is in a condo, it's a condominium home set in a private setting. There are some existing fences of this height for short sections. This fence is going to be between two homes, approximately 40 plus feet from the road. And again, this fence does not, is not going to position on any rear boundary lines that would affect any of the budding neighbors of this condo, this condo property. And we find that it is within the spirit and ten of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect the property values of certain parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Ms. McKay, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations, that's five to nothing, your variance is approved. Please be aware, as I said earlier, that there is a 30 day window of appeal. Please contact Mr. Falk at the planning department if you have questions.
Thank you.
Next is case number seven. Owner David and Deborah Philibrown, addresses 4 Hyanna Street, Sheet F, Lot 319, requesting variance from land use code section 190-31 to encroach 10 feet into the 20 foot front yard setback on Pelham Street to install a 24 foot ground above ground swimming pool. This is in the R9 zone, Ward 1. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Hi, thank you for your time, David and Deborah Philibrown. We'd like to install the above ground pool, 10 foot into the setback on Pelham Street. The reason for it going on that side of the yard, on the other side of the yard, it's very tight when you add the pool and then the setback and the distance from the house. So there was a little, there's a slope on that side of the yard, on Pelham Street side, cut into that slope and the pool would go right in there. We are going to be putting a privacy fence up around that part of the yard. The rest of the yard is going to be chain link. And I don't think it'll affect the neighbors. It wouldn't be in sight at all.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
I didn't, I didn't know if in the pack, well, in the package, there's a, like a hand drawn map, I guess you'd say, of where the pool is proposed. I didn't know if that was the scale, and I know you mentioned it, I think you said there's a slope, but I was just wondering about the, if you could speak again, if you already did, I wasn't quite sure about perhaps putting the pool, you know, in, I guess I'd call it the back corner, where it wouldn't be in a front yard setback. Yeah, Kate's kind of swirling around that corner that I'm thinking. You know, the pool might be situated. What is this challenge with situating it where Kate's cursor is now?
The challenge, the challenge with that is the 319, and that doesn't include my bulkhead coming out, my walkway back there, and then the rear property setback from my neighbor in the back. So it's very tight back there in that corner, from both my neighbors on the left side and the rear neighbor.
And I just wonder, I think you're proposing, what is it, a 20?
24.
I didn't know if you had considered a, you know, a smaller pool and would that be able to then fit in the corner?
My, to my, my fault, I bought the pool last year when everybody was buying pools. I purchased the pool. I was under the impression, I misunderstood. I thought it was 20 feet from the road, not 20 feet from my property line, which I also didn't realize was 10 feet into the yard. So the pool was already purchased. So that's what we were pretty much stuck with installing.
Okay, thank you for that. I guess I'm all set for now.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. McCarron?
The pool, it's like the proposed pool is 15 feet from the house or the deck structure. Is it possible to bring the pool closer?
It'll block the walkway between the shed and the house. There's a walkway there. So if it comes any closer towards that way, it blocks that entrance to the backyard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Don't think there are any. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
I'll note that, you know, again, it's a corner lot, right? So there's a challenge here because the side of the house is actually a street, right? So that's why it's considered front. So I do believe that that there would be, you know, less of an issue or maybe could be almost with no incursion if, if, you know, there was, this wasn't a corner lot. But because it's a corner lot, we have that front, yeah, setback. I, I, I understand the issue. When I did the side visit, I kind of got the gist that, I was thinking that back left corner. But as noted, there are some other features that were not, that are not like spelled out in the diagram that we had and doesn't show on the GIS map, and I understand that. So I, I don't have a problem with the location of the pool. And again, you know, pools are something that I think is customary to have. Again, I think if it wasn't for the, you know, the two front setbacks, I think this would not be an issue. But, but I'll, but I can support the application with the way it stands and the way it's being presented.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm in support. I think, I mean, I just think this lot is highly constrained, especially a corner lot, as we've talked about many other times, with those front yard setbacks being applied on what by, you know, general appearances, especially in a property like this, does look like a side yard. So I think, you know, we explored some of the other questions about locating the pool in different parts of the property. And again, it's, the constraints seem to be pretty significant to the point of this seems to be the only really viable option for the applicant. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I agree with what's been said. I also support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara.
I would agree. I struggle with it a bit, but I think a pool, having an above-ground pool is not unreasonable. I think it's a pretty typical customer use. There's other ones in the neighborhood. The twenty-four-foot size certainly couldn't go smaller, but it's not unusually large, given that it is a fairly small lot and it's a corner lot. It is challenging. I thought about that back corner, but it would be challenging certainly to put a pool of this size in that corner. I think so. For those reasons, I support the application.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm also in support of the application for all the same reasons already stated.
Thank you. Ms. McKay.
I too am in support of the application. I like the idea that he took into consideration his neighbors' access to his own yard and the constraints within the property itself. So I absolutely support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
You know, I struggle with the application. I certainly appreciate the, my other board members' comments. You know, as I drive back and forth on Pelham Street, you know, to me, I think the pool would look like it's a pool in a front yard. And, you know, sometimes, you know, when there's a corner lot, I think the two front yard setback is a real, real thing, a real burden, and needs to be respected. I don't think I need to say any more than that, but I struggle with the application. I also feel that, I mean, regrettably, the applicant made a mistake. We all make mistakes, you know, in the large pool. I think, you know, perhaps a smaller pool could be situated in that back corner. So I think there is an alternative there, but I'll just leave it at that. And, you know, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Thanks. I am in support of the application, given that there's going to be a privacy fence around it, so it won't be visible from the, from the street or really from the neighbors. I mean, yeah, would have, sure, it would have been good if everything had been figured out correctly in advance. But I don't really have a problem with this application. Is there somebody who would care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, were you volunteering to make a, okay.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of David and Deborah Philibrown at 4 Hyanna Street, Sheet F Lot 319. Request is for variance from Land Use Code Section 190-31 to encroach ten feet into the twenty-foot front yard side, excuse me, front yard setback. This is on Pelham Street, to install a twenty-four-foot round above-ground swimming pool. This is in the R9 Zone. The variance is needed for the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property. The, the lot is not a large lot, and this is a moderately large pool, which has already been purchased. But the, the board did discuss with the applicant whether any other options existed and for various constraints with the back corner of the property, walkway, shed, et cetera. And those things, there's really is not another spot which this pool can be appropriately and reasonably placed. So there really isn't an available option other than this variance. It will be within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indications of negative effects on property values for surrounding parcels. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice will be served. And I move to apply, approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes not in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations. That's four to one. Your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. Contact Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to case number eight. Owner is 20 Hamilton Street LLC, addresses 20 Hamilton Street, Sheet 100 Lot 148, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 163, for minimum land area, five thousand fifty-foot square foot, existing ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square foot required to add one additional dwelling unit within an existing two-family dwelling. This is in the RC Zone, Ward 6. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney with Goddessman and Hollis at 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. And I'm here representing 20 Hamilton Street LLC, which is the owner of property at 20 Hamilton Street in Nashua. This is in the neighborhood, which is nearby to what used to be the original high school and then became Elm Street Junior High. And it's a nice mixed dwelling neighborhood. And this is near the corner of Hamilton and Brook Street. What you have in front of you is the tax map, unfortunately, it's a Google map and not the official tax map. But the Google map, I just wanted to show you, you can't really see the outline of the structures, but I put the number of dwelling units in the area. So you can see there are some that are four, some that are three, some that are two, and some that are one. And it's a very mixed-use area. The bottom of this screen is the picture of the dwelling that we're talking about. See, there are two entry doors leading off of the front, and there's a side driveway. The property, I just attached to it the listing of all of the properties so that if anybody had any questions, they could confirm the number of units that are listed on the assessor's records to match the variety of units. The, the property itself is located in the RC Zone, which is multifamily is allowed in the zone. However, as indicated on the application, this property, this lot, has only five thousand fifty square feet. And in order to have three families on this property, you're going to need ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square feet. So it's a small lot. But if you look at this picture that's right here, you will see what the real genesis of this request is. You can see it as a two-and-a-half-story with a bump out at the third floor. My client bought this property and it had three families. There were three families, one of which was an illegal unit, the top floor. That property has since been, that unit has been gutted. Renovations have been undertaken. You can see they're sort of mid-renovation of the property. We need a determination of zoning board whether it'll be lawfully three units or lawfully two units. The proposal is that the third floor, which is currently empty and gutted, would become the third unit. That is, the unlawful unit would go back to being a lawful unit. This property has, you know, been used for three families for a number of years. And as a result, the neighborhood is quite used to it, but it was an illegal unit. So before renovations are completed, my client is before this board to determine whether it be lawful. I have a series of exhibits, Kate. I don't know if you're able to pull up all the exhibits that I had. But if we start with Exhibit A and just run through them quickly. That, that letter is sort of the Chet Rogers opinion letter. That's almost at the very end. I think it's the last, yeah, Exhibit O. I don't know if you have A, B, C, so on, you can find and call up.
Attorney Hollis, I have Exhibit O. And based on the discussions that I had with Julia at your office, I believe that's all I have beyond the application.
And the other Exhibits A through N, did they make it to the board?
Yes, they made it to the board package.
All right. Well, I can refer to them as we go along, so the board can follow. I'm sorry, the public can't. But Exhibit A is the floor plans for first and second floors. Exhibit B is the floor plans for the third floor. So if you look at your package, you will see in the exhibits that there's a definite apartment unit in each floor level, and third floor has a smaller unit. There's an ZBA exhibit plan. Oh, here we go. Thank you, Kate. So that's Exhibit A, and that shows the living area and the layout. Exhibit B shows the third floor unit, which is a smaller unit. Exhibit C shows how that property fits on the existing lot. There are no proposed exterior changes to this building whatsoever. The building will be as it is. There's no additional structural changes nor add-ons or sheds or anything else proposed with this. The next Exhibit D shows the outside of the building with the siding partially in place, ongoing renovations. Exhibit E shows the third floor, and that is the condition of it currently before any further construction is undertaken. There were some code issues, which is why the third floor was not approved. In addition to the density, it was not up to code. The next Exhibit F is the third floor, which shows the windows that would be available and the original electrical boxes, which still remain in place. Exhibit G is the rear stairs looking down from the third floor. And these stairs are somewhat important because this is, this is an unusual two-and-a-half-story structure in that there's not just one set of stairs going to the third floor. There are two separate sets of stairs because it's essentially, that's the other set, the rear stairs. It's essentially set up as a three-unit house. So if a three-unit doesn't go in there, this has to be reconfigured, totally reconfigured, or we're incorporating these staircases in some fashion to the second-floor unit with access, dual access to the third-floor portion of the second-floor unit. The next slide is rear stairs again from the first-floor landing. So you can see there are just a continuous set of stairs, which would give outside access to the third floor. That's the way it was constructed. And then Exhibit J is more of the stairs as they exist today. Just giving you a sense, and K is the same, how difficult this setup is currently and has been, as evidenced by the age of the timbers, reflecting three families for a long, long time. My client approached the fire department about the accessibility and the issue of fire safety sprinklers. And the email, as it says right there, the life safety record requires two means of escape from sleeping rooms. And based on this section, appears the designs which were sent will meet the requirements. And those are the code requirements. So this is important when it gets to no threat to health, safety, or welfare of the public. So that concludes all of the exhibits. With that introduction, I'll just roll right to the arguments, if I might. As you know, there are five criteria. The first criteria is if you grant the variance, it can't be public, contrary to the public interest. The standard is it will not materially alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And in this case, there will be no change to the character of the neighborhood. You have a property that was a three-family for a number of years, a long number of years, and now would become a three-family. No exterior changes, no noticeable effect on the neighborhood in that there's sufficient room on the lot to park vehicles, as have been parked in the past. There won't be any threat to the health, safety, or welfare of the public in that, as indicated by the fire marshal, these existing sets of stairs are ideal for providing access to the separate dwelling unit on the third floor. Allowing a third unit to be constructed will be in the public interest in that we're always looking for ways to create lawful, modest apartment units in a city that is suffering with inadequate housing supply. And what's going to happen if the variance is denied is that this property, the second floor will incorporate the third floor. It'll be a larger unit. There'll be more people living in it. And eventually, sadly to say, there's a good possibility that third floor would become a third unit anyway, as it did in the past. So it only makes sense in the public interest to rebuild and construct, according to code, a lawful third unit, and that is in public interest. Observing the spirit of the ordinance, if you grant the variance, it must be observed, must observe the spirit of the ordinance. Well, as we know, the spirit of the ordinance with regard to density, and we're woefully lacking in density here, meeting the requirement, we're not supposed to place too much of a building on a small lot. Not supposed to place too many units on a small lot. That's really the purpose of the zoning ordinance with respect to density. In this instance, you already have a pre-existing building, which is not going to change. The size won't change. They, probably the use and number of occupants won't change, whether it's two units or three units. We're creating a very modest third-floor unit. We're not going to, in essence, violate the spirit of the ordinance because we're not asking to add a third unit. We're not asking to take a smaller lot and build a three-unit building. We're simply asking for a third unit within a building to create a modest-sized unit. Again, there'll be no threat to the health, safety, or welfare of the public. We vetted it with the fire department. Obviously, there's plenty of room on the property as evidenced by the site plan that was prepared by an engineering firm, showing that there's adequate parking. The driveway is adequate to store two cars side by side, and there's a good-sized backyard. It will not alter the essential character because the character won't change. The character of the neighborhood is. Character of the neighborhood is a single family, duplex, three family, four family, and there's even one family, one five family in the immediate neighborhood. Number three, substantial justice will be done. This is where you have to weigh, what's the harm to the public if you grant it? Versus what's the harm to the applicant if it's denied? There'll be no real harm to the public. As I said, normally you're confronted with someone who wants to take a building and add on and/or build a new building on a smaller lot and create units. This is one that already preexisted. We're trying to make it lawful. It would be up to code. And it has its own separate front entrance and rear entrance, which is necessary these days. So no change, no harm to the neighborhood. But if you deny it, there'll be substantial harm to the applicant in that you're going to end up with a unit which is not ideal. That second floor having to incorporate the third floor and reconfigure all these staircases that are part of the structural design. The fourth criteria is there'll be no adverse impact on the values of surrounding properties. As I indicated, there'd be no change in the exterior. And my client is currently in the state of upgrading the entirety of the exterior, improving the property itself and adding value to the property. I think you've received some supportive letters from abutting property holders who indicate they feel it will upgrade the value of the neighborhood. In addition, my client's request, I retained an independent appraiser, Mr. Chet Rogers, and asked him if he would view the entire neighborhood, look at all the properties, and rendered independent opinion as to whether adding this third unit as proposed by the variance would adversely affect values of surrounding properties. I believe you have that letter. It was put up by Kate first as the first exhibit here. Second exhibit, sorry. Exhibit O, and his conclusion is that there is precedence in the neighborhood for buildings with more than two apartment units. And since there will be no physical changes to the exterior of the building, I opine that allowing this change from a two unit building to a three unit building does not alter the character of the neighborhood and will not detract from the aesthetics of the area. So I believe it's his opinion. It will not devalue the property of the budding properties. Number five is the hardship argument. So what do we have here? What makes this qualifies this property for the variance application? What makes it unique? Certainly, the lot is no different than other lots in the neighborhood. But what you have is an existing building with the existing staircases designed for three units. That's the way it's been constructed. It's going to require substantial alteration in order to make this, convert this into a two family dwelling unit. So the uniqueness is within the property itself. And I think I could also say it's probably somewhat unique of someone applying for a permit for a lawful three bedroom unit when there was an unlawful one. But I don't think that's a fair argument to make to you folks who've been around the block. I think the only uniqueness we have is the structure. That's why I showed the pictures. That's what struck me as being the uniqueness of the property. If you take the, take a look at those staircases and the way the building is laid out, it is unique compared to others that you just don't see. And they have to start cutting up apartments, adding outside stairwells, outside emergency accessways, and that isn't the case.
Attorney Hollis, you have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you. If you take the uniqueness and you ask the question of, does it bear, does enforcement of the ordinance against this property bear any fair and substantial relationship to the purpose of keeping the density low? The answer is no. There'll be no change to the outside. Finally, is this a reasonable use? Yes. It's in keeping with the rest of the units in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Attorney Hollis, you mentioned letters for abutters. I didn't see any letters for abutters in the material that we were sent.
I saw copies of them, but maybe they didn't get there.
Do not recall receiving any. It's generally helpful if I get everything all at once. Last minute submissions make it difficult.
Yeah, they weren't through me, so I didn't submit them.
Maybe we're lost in the mail.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Currier?
And just if you could speak a couple of questions I have. First, on the driveway, I didn't, it looked to me like it was one car width. Is it one or two car wide? And how many cars can park off the street?
It is two car width. I actually had a kind of a picture of it, but I don't think it made it in the exhibits. But it's two car width and it can park three deep. There's also area in the backyard that could be used, but the driveway itself, in answer to your question, is two car width, three car depth.
All right, thank you. And the other question is, you know, I note the staircases as they're built. If this were not approved, you know, I'm not a construction guy, but why couldn't the staircases just be left as is? And without any major alteration?
I think my client, Kevin Corvo, is on, and he is better to explain that than me. Kevin, are you still on? I see your name there. Can you unmute and maybe answer the question?
And give your address, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yeah, my name is Kevin Corvo. I reside at Six Blackford Drive in Nashla. One of the owners of 20 Hamilton Street. To answer your question, it really becomes an issue of what this was used for before. Those staircases, what they did before in creating that third unit was its own unique, its own separate third unit. It had access from the both the front and back hallway. If if the, it is not, if the zoning variance is not granted, we would incorporate that third floor into the second floor unit and make it basically like a four or five bedroom unit, which is not really as desirable to to us or the neighborhood. It just, it creates more, more problems. But then you have to incorporate those staircases into the apartment to to comply with all the fire codes. So therein lies the major renovation that we would have to, that we would have to do to the property.
So right now, I'm looking at the floor plan of the first and second floor. And I see like a staircase in the front left corner of the house and in the right rear corner of the house. And is the staircase in the front connected to the second floor? And is the staircase in the back connected to the second floor?
They are, they are, of course, connected to the second floor, both front and rear. But if you, again, that's kind of the way it was designed. And then you have certain requirements. When you get to the top of the stairs, you need three feet before an entry door and stuff like that. So all those requirements right now are met. But the minute you take that second floor and you combine it with that third floor, then you're talking about moving some of those, some of those walls. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but it, when you say move a wall with, could you, could you just say the front staircase or back staircase? What, what wall would need to be moved? It just seems to me that it could just be situated just the way it is now and serve perfectly fine. But I
The front staircase, the front staircase may, may not be as much of an issue as the rear staircase. Because the rear staircase has a, currently has a hallway going to the third floor. In other words, you come up the stairs, you jog into the house, and then you walk down a hallway to again, go up the stairs to the third floor. I don't know if it shows on the second floor plan. I think that may be outside the second floor plan. I don't think, I don't think those plans, I think they show the footprint of the second floor unit. They don't show the outside of the unit.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not seeing it there. I mean, so here Kate's got it up. And it says first and second floor. You know, it looks to me like the staircase in the back is connected to the second floor.
And so the staircase in the back, when you see those, those kind of those blue lines, that, that, that's actually in front of the staircase or below the stairs there. That's actually a hallway that goes to that, to the, to the right side of the house, if you will, and then goes up the stairs. The entry door to the second unit is right to the, to the left of, right to the left, yes, right there, exactly.
Okay.
So that's that three foot landing, right in front of that door is the three foot landing. And that's, there's no wall that, I don't know why that wall is there to the, right in front of your cursor. That's a continuous hallway. And then there, there's a door to the, to the right before you go up the stairs. Correct, right there. There's a door right there to go to the third floor.
Okay. All right, I just leave it at testimony that there'd have to be something, construction there to make it. All right, thank you, thank you. I guess I did have one other question. When I went to see the site, I didn't know if, is the street, Hamilton, is that thinner than the rest? I mean, I, I mean, maybe I wanted a bad time, but I had to wait. And then I had to zigzag left and right around cars on the street. And I thought, holy, wow, this is a really tight street. There's
I don't think it's, sorry if I interrupt you. I don't think it's tighter than any other street in the neighborhood. I think what the problem is, the last month or so, they've been redoing the gas lines. So they've been, yeah, I think that's, I mean, I'm surprised. There's some days we can't even get down the street. They haven't coned off on both ends. I think it's just a matter of the, of the the construction and the way they're ripping up the pavement on one, on the other side of the street. But I, I don't, I don't think on a regular basis, we notice that there's, it's a, it's a narrower street than any other street on that neighborhood off of Lake Street.
Okay, all right, yeah, that was probably the case. I mean, it was certainly dug up when I was there. All right, thank you.
Other board members with questions? Mr. Shaw?
Attorney Hollis, I, I think you actually spoke to this, at least to some detail, but I either didn't fully grasp it or whatever. But was the third, was the third unit ever considered legal or was it always an illegal unit? And I guess, can you just kind of go through that history a little bit about the nature of the third unit in this property?
Again, Mr. Corvo, it might be best to answer that question. I'm aware that it was illegal for some time, but I don't know. Kevin, do you know the answer to that question?
I don't know the exact timeframe. I know you know, when we purchased the property, when we looked at the property, we obviously saw that they had used it as a third unit. We knew, we knew we were renovating the first and second floor 100% and we were going to be pulling permits. And that's when we said, you know, listen, we want to do this. We want to do this the right way. And, and, you know, regardless of what was done before or how long. I know that Attorney Hollis spoke to the timbers. I mean, all those timbers going to the third floor and what we ripped out of there, the drywall and stuff like that, was probably, the timbers are definitely original, but the stuff, you know, looked, it's, it's not like the past 10 or 15 or 20 years. And this is, this has been there for quite a while. The grates, the grates through the floors were the old metal, you know, through floor to floor grates for heat. So probably I'm thinking 40, 40, 50 years that that thing's been used as a, as a third unit.
Okay, thank you.
Other board members with questions? Not seeing any. Okay. Attorney Hollis says that there were letters in, from abutters in favor. We'll maybe get to that later. Anybody present with wishes to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody present who wishes to speak with questions, concerns or opposition to the application? Not seeing any. Attorney Hollis, can you summarize or quote the letters that you, letter, letters that you have from abutters? You're muted, sir.
If you give me one second, I'm just going to look in my computer here to see if I in fact can find them. What I saw.
If you can't, we'll just accept your testimony that
I saw two, but I, I think they came in the form of an email to me. And I just don't see the email readily. I don't want to delay the board. It just said there was no objection. And one, one I recall saying they were in support because they thought the improvements being made by the current owner upgraded the neighborhood.
Very good. Okay, let's see. So there was nobody with, with questions, concerns or opposition. So I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, you have comments?
As I sit and listen, the building has been nonconforming for years. And when they went up and took things apart, there were code violations. I think that in my limited scope on this or how I feel about this, I would almost rather see the third floor there and done correctly, rather than see no third floor and have access to that floor and have somebody down the road want to put somebody up there or put a hot plate or put something up there that's not legal and cause some kind of serious safety issue. So I, I guess I commend the applicant for trying to rectify a situation that has gone on either unnoticed or unknown for decades. And I'm struggling to find non-support for this application. I, I look at the safety factors, I look at the building codes and I say, it's been in existence. It may have been nonconforming, but it's been a nonconforming existing operation that the whole neighborhood just took to be the norm. And so that's how I approach this. I would rather see it be safe and legal than unsafe and illegal.
Thank you. Mr. Currier?
Well, I guess I feel like noting at first that, you know, I certainly appreciate the applicant seeking the right venue. And, you know, he's been around a while and I see he does a lot of good work around town. With this application, I'm, I guess I'm struggling a bit, looking for other board input. I mean, the, the overage or underage of square feet is rather stark. I mean, it's less than half what it should be. And I guess I'm still kind of, I'm still feeling that it's not a real hardship at all to just, you know, it's not like there has to be any major, I don't think there has to be any major reconstruction to keep it a two family. It's just, so I'm, I'm struggling with that. I appreciate the applicant doing the right thing by asking correctly versus making an illegal unit. so I, I'm, I'm struggling with that, while I appreciate the applicant doing the right thing by asking correctly versus making an illegal unit. Um, I, I, you know, I feel it was, feel it was purchased as a two-family, knowing it was a two-family legally. And uh, that's where I'm at on it, but looking forward to hear other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
Um. Again, testimony is that um, you know, the property's been used in a certain way for many, many, many years and, you know, testimony is probably going back possibly, you know, forty years. Um, couple of things, um, again, you know, there was testimony that there was some support in here. Any testimony against adding the extra unit? I think that um, if, you know, we accept or I accept the fact, which I do, that this has been operating as a, as a three-family or a third unit for many years. Um, again, I think it's what, I think it's um, the fact that it's been operating that way uh, for that amount of time and that it's, you know, been in existence. Uh, I think it's pretty much uh, an accepted um, norm for that neighborhood. Um, again, the, the, the neighborhood does have multifamily, uh, some multifamily units. Um, there are definitely more of the two-family units, but I do notice that a lot of those two-family units are only on even small apostles. So again, you know, there is um, that density uh, issue in that neighborhood, which is um, you know, I would say is a typical of what we'd see in, in that neighborhood. Um, I think that um, having the third unit there um, would not increase um, you know, net, there'll be no net increase in the number of people I believe that would be there. Um, you know, again, they could certainly, you know, as testified, that could be incorporated into the second floor unit and it would just be more bedrooms and in some respects, you know, um, that could draw the same amount of people or more people. You know, we don't know, right? So um, again, I don't think that um, the, there's any negative impact to, to, to quote-unquote legalize that third unit. And I think it's definitely a benefit to um, the city of Nashville. So with that, I believe I will be supporting the application.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I'm inclined to support the application, I think the, what I, I guess, I'm mostly looking at, I don't really see a change in intensity of use of what's been going on in this property for a long time. I understand, you know, there's kind of this long uncertain history regarding uh, perhaps how long a third unit had been in place here. Uh, but uh, I, I, I guess I see that, I, I do think that there could be easily ways that the third floor could be incorporated in the second floor, you know, uh, unit. Uh, but at the same time, I don't necessarily see that um, the intensity is going to be very different one way or the other of having the third unit, it's not like the applicant's coming and asking for um, some external addition uh, to what hasn't already been in existence. Uh, meanwhile, there's other aspects of, you know, the parking is already sufficient for uh, the three units. And um, so I guess, like I said, generally, I think that uh, I'm not seeing a detriment to having this be used as, as a three-unit or versus a two-unit, quite frankly, so that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles.
I'm also in support of the, the uh, variance uh, with Ms. McKay and Mr. Boucher. Um, I think the fact that it's been a non-conforming three-unit for so long and uh, the owner's now trying to bring it in conformance. Um, you know, that pushes me um, in that direction, but that the continued non-conforming use has kind of made it the, the character of the neighborhood at this point. And I think the um, five criteria have been met.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mancaro.
Well, I, I, I guess I, I can't get past that the essence of the argument seems to be that a, a unit was created illegally. Therefore, that justifies uh, the variance. Um, if it were a non-conforming use, then it wouldn't need to be here because it would be a legal, non-conforming, three-family, it's not. The apartment was created illegally and I don't think, and I think that that is really the essence of the argument as to why it should be allowed to continue, um, and I really have a hard time getting there. And I also have a hard time getting past the degree to which they're seeking relief, which is, you know, over a hundred percent increased in density over what the zoning allows.
Thank you, Ms. Burrows.
I'm actually in support of the application uh, for the reasons already stated by JP, um, Mary Ellen and Mr. Knuckles.
And I am also in support of the application, I, I recognize that it, the uh, the overage is, is considerable um, and that it was uh, an illegal apartment for so long, but um, I, I think that overall, the benefit to uh, to the city and to the neighborhood would be to have it uh, become a legal apartment. And um, and therefore I'm going to uh, support the application.
Uh, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the air variance for Twenty Hamilton Street LLC owner, Twenty Hamilton Street, Sheet One Hundred, Lot One Forty Eight, requesting a variance from land use code, Section One Ninety Dash Sixteen, Table Sixteen Dash Three, for minimum land area, five thousand fifty square feet, existing ten thousand four hundred fifty-four square, square feet required to add one additional dwelling unit within an existing two-family dwelling, it's in the R B zone Ward Six. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Again, uh, as per testimony, um, this um, non-conformance or this illegal apartment has been in existence for quite some number of years. Um, the current owner of the property is requesting to um, to legalize, quote-unquote, the existence of this uh, third unit. Um, um, for, for the purpose of, of again, making it legal and, and to conform to all code, uh, current building codes and safety. Uh, we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it would not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Do I have a second, Ms. McKay, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Yeah. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Uh, Mr. Courier votes in favor, and could you repeat who seconded that for me, please?
Ms. McKay.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I, if, just to clarify, I was voting not in favor.
Okay.
Not in favor.
Not in favor. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor, that's four to one. Uh, congratulations, your variance is approved, uh, again, thirty-day uh, window of appeal. Uh, contact planning department if you have questions.
Thank you very much, everyone, good night.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to case number nine. Owner is uh, Kenneth Timothy Jeffrey and Kevin Forrance, three and nine Fifth Street, Sheet Eighty Seven, lots three oh nine and three ten, requesting the following variances from land use code, Section One Ninety Dash Sixteen, Table Sixteen Dash Three, first to uh, on proposed lot eighty-seven, three oh nine dash one, for minimum lot area, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet required, eighty-six hundred square feet proposed. Uh, two, proposed lot eighty-seven, three oh nine dash two, minimum lot area, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four square foot required, eighty-six hundred square feet proposed, both request to combine existing lots eighty-seven, three oh nine and eighty-seven, three ten, re-subdivide it to three lots with lot eighty-seven, three ten remaining. Oh wait, is that the one repeating, it's actually. But uh, with lot eighty-seven, three ten remaining as a conforming, simple-family detached dwelling and requesting a two-family dwelling uh, each on the remaining two lots. This is in the R B zone Ward Four. Now, this is a variation of a application that we had before and um, I'm wondering what the, do we need a Fisher v Dover uh, uh, question on, on this, or, or do we agree that it's sufficiently different from the previous application? Mr. Courier.
My thought is, we would want to do a Fisher v Dover test to be thorough too. Uh, that's just my thought.
Okay, well, we can certainly do that. Um, I haven't done this before, but I think what, what it would be was, is we just need to poll the board to see whether this is a substantially different application to the one from last October, I think it was, uh, where they wanted to put three uh, three duplexes on uh, on, on the, the various lots, so now we have two duplexes. Um. Ms. McKay, what do you think?
Honestly, since I wasn't here for the first one, um, I wouldn't have an answer, I was not at that meeting. So, I don't want to go, I, I'm gonna abstain.
You're abstaining fine, Mr. Courier, uh, your comment?
Um, my opinion, it, it is substantially different, uh, the, the other previous application was a lot had additional lot, you might say, the density was greater, that was the overall concern of the board. And uh, this is one building or lot less, uh, not sure how to exactly phrase that, but to me, that is a substantial differently, substantially different application.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
I also think this is sufficiently different from the October twenty twenty application that I think it um, does meet the um, the criteria and should be heard as a new application.
Okay, Mr. Boucher?
I believe it's substantially different.
Okay, and, and I also think it's substantially different, so, okay, so that's uh, for, for saying it's different, one abstaining, so we will, we will proceed. Um, and uh, somebody, oh, Mr. Shaw?
Just wondering if we should actually take, I think, I feel like we should take a vote on that, though, just so it's clear on the record.
Okay, I, I guess I had, I'd been thinking that was our vote, but maybe not, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we didn't put it in the form of a motion.
Ah, okay, very good, uh, would you care to make a motion?
I make a motion uh, that uh, the board does proceed uh, with this case, uh, having discussed uh, the uh, uh, question as to whether or not there is a material, there is a material difference in the application uh, versus the previous variance application of October twenty twenty and that this case uh, does meet the Fisher v Dover criteria and that the board should proceed with hearing it as a new case, so that's my motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Boucher, thank you. Okay, uh, Ms. McKay, are you still going to abstain?
I could go along with the board, but it's probably cleaner if I abstain.
Okay, Mr. Courier?
You're muted, sir.
All right about that, I vote in favor of Mr. Shaw's uh, motion that this is uh, substantially different and we should proceed.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Um. Did I, let's see. Two. Think I got, and, and I vote in favor, did I miss anybody? I think that's, that's four, four in favor and, and one abstaining. Um. So uh, so we will proceed. Um, so is there somebody here to present the case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the board.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
Uh, maybe I missed it, did you read the case in?
I did, yes, I did, at the be, at the beginning.
Okay, I'm sorry, I probably missed it, thank you.
Attorney Westgate?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I thought you stood up for a moment.
Yeah, I did, just off the cat.
Thank you, again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening, my name is Brad Westgate, I'm a lawyer with Wiener Bennett, one eleven Concord Street in Nashville, representing uh, the Foronces, owners and applicants of the property. Uh, with me are Timothy and Nicole Foronces as well, uh, you'll see them on the screen. Um, thank you for making the specific Fisher v Dover determination, we appreciate that very much for the record. Uh, the Foronce family, as you may know, is the longstanding owners and operators of Gate City Fence here in Nashville. Kate, thank you for posting the uh, um, G I S map that indicates these properties. So that, there are two properties involved, Mr. Chairman, uh, Lot Eight Dash Three Oh Nine, sorry, Eighty Seven, Three Oh Nine and Eighty Seven, Three Ten on Fifth Street. The Eighty Seven, Three Oh Nine is a vacant lot presently, Eighty Seven, uh, Three Ten holds a single-family home and a garage. As the board noted, back in November of two thousand twenty, we had sought variances to, after consolidating these properties, create three lots for two-family homes duplexes and one lot conforming for the single-family home. This new application contemplates the same lot for the single-family home, a six thousand square foot compliant lot, uh, but only two lots for two-family homes rather than three. We would uh, take all the land area that is uh, not allocated to the six thousand square foot uh, single-family home, again consolidate and re-subdivide into the two duplex lots plus the six thousand square foot lot for the single-family home and propose to put duplexes on each of those two vacant lots that you see. We heard comments at the November meeting, of course, um, from neighbors and from the board relative to the concerns about density with a three duplex proposal, uh, took heart to that and came back with this new proposal. So in effect, what this boils down to is the two lots that remain for duplex purposes would be a total of seventeen thousand two hundred square feet, each would have eight thousand six hundred square feet, when under the density regulation, twelve thousand four hundred and forty-five square feet is necessary for each lot. Properties in the R B district, serviced by city water and sewer, electric power, telecommunications, natural gas. The properties, as the board knows, are located in a relatively uh, dense section of the city and in, in inner-city neighborhood, contains a number of two-family dwellings, single-family homes, of course, uh, even a multifamily dwelling of six units to the rear of our property. Kate, if you could go, thank you, appreciate that. Um, what we tried to depict in this uh, schematic, Mr. Chairman, was uh, a proposed layout to just give a sense of what the two units would look like on each of the lots and then driveways, of course, and then the green area or open space for each of the lots. And just to give you a sense of that, the um, the lot that would be at the corner of um, at the corner of Leg Street and Fifth Street, and the lot that would be internal, the other duplex lots, they both would have at least sixty-five percent open space coverage, they vary presumably from about sixty-five to seventy percent, uh, when a thirty-five percent open space ratio is required. So, a significant effort to make uh, considerable open space for both of these parcels. These lots would comply in all respects with uh, the minimum uh, the other, excuse me, dimensional requirements in the land use code, uh, including setback requirements, uh, driveway location off Leg Street, um, minimum driveway uh, widths, um, and parking spaces. And we just tried to give you a little bit of a sense of the elevation drawings that you may see from the front of the two buildings. Uh, this would be the, the first one would be the building at the corner of ledge and Fifth Street and the second one has a proposed elevation for the interior duplex lot. If we could go back to um, the first slide, Kate, with the, the, I'm sorry, the second slide, the first one on the plan, right, exactly, thank you. We tried to give you a sense of the abutting properties, what's the rest of the neighborhood like on Fifth Street? We tried to give you a sense of the abutting properties. What's the rest of the neighborhood like on Fifth Street and to the rear on Fourth Street? And it might be a little hard to read, but if, if, uh, if zoomed in a little bit on it. You can see, for example, if we take a look at Fourth Street, the properties to the rear, there's a two family dwelling to the rear. Uh, on approximately seventy two hundred square foot lot. As we head into Fourth Street, there's a six family dwelling on a ninety six hundred square foot lot. And we go further into Fourth Street, there's another two family dwelling on sixty four hundred square feet. So there's ten dwelling units abutting us to the rear on Fourth Street. If you go over to Fifth Street and look across the street from us on Fifth Street, starting at the Led Street side. There's a two family dwelling on a. Quite small lot, thirty six hundred square foot lot, another two family dwelling and another small lot of thirty two hundred square feet. Uh, there's a two family dwelling on a sixty four hundred square foot lot. Another two family dwelling on a thirty two hundred square foot lot, and then the lot next to it, I gather houses the garage that. Relates to the two family dwelling just to the left on the plan. And then just a little past us further down Fifth Street is the two family dwelling at twelve Fifth Street. So on about a similar land mass on that side of Fifth Street, you have ten units. Similar land mass behind us on Fourth Street, you have ten units. We propose a total of five units on our three lots. If I may address the five criteria for the granting of a variance, Mr. Chairman, um. First criteria is that the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest. We would respectfully submit that it's not contrary to the public interest. To allow a two family dwelling on a lot with approximately eighty six hundred square feet. When the city's master plan and land use code encourage infill development. The variance would permit good quality, new residential development on an inner city lot, inner city neighborhood. And the proposed density of two two family units is less by unit than the overall density. Of the properties to our rear and across this street. Section one ninety sixteen of the land use code and its purposes provision expressly encourages infill development. And we think it's in the public interest to allow this type of new development showing vitality in the neighborhood. Uh, in a densely developed part of the inner city, when the ordinance is contemplate infill development. Second, uh, criteria is a proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. Again. This also similarly goes to the encouragement of infill development. The older neighborhoods in the city are the ideal locations for inner city, for infill development. This is a perfect example of it. Quality housing on two lots that frankly are greater in size than any of the duplex lots abutting it or across the street from it. No infrastructure is needed other than typically utility tie-ins. And the spirit of the ordinance, again, encouraging this type of development which has minimal infrastructure needs. Third, that substantial justice be done. Uh, substantial justice is done when the, uh, granting of the variance. Excuse me, when the denial of the variance, uh, uh, generates, uh. An adverse impact on the applicant. But the denial of variance doesn't do any appreciable gain to the general public. In this case, the general public would realize no appreciable gain if the variance was denied. In fact, they. Lose some benefit by the loss of the, uh, quality, uh, two family homes that are contemplated. The applicant, on the other hand, substantially is harmed if the variance is denied in the substantial justice weight case. The fourth criteria is that the proposed use would not diminish the value surrounding properties. Uh, we would respectfully submit that adding new duplexes on these two lots in a. Longstanding densely developed neighborhood. On a, at a unit density that is, uh, certainly less than its abutting properties to the rear and across Fifth Street. Um, does not value, diminish the value surrounding properties. It shows again, new construction vitality in the neighborhood. Uh, neighborhoods are typically enhanced in value when new constructions entertain. You'll see, and I believe the last slide, Kate, is the, is a letter from, um, Central Realty. Richard Jean, who, uh, took a look at the, uh, application. Made some determinations and conclusions and came to the conclusion that in his opinion. Uh, the proposal would not diminish the value surrounding properties. In fact, would enhance the value of surrounding properties as he concludes in his second to last paragraph in his letter. Last criteria is, of course, the hardship criteria. Or knows the two-prong standard very well, we first take a look at the. Specific conditions relative to the particular property. This property has a number of special conditions, again, located in a densely longstanding developing or city neighborhood. Uh, it is adjacent to properties that have a significantly greater unit density than what we, what we propose. As I mentioned, ten units to the rear, ten units again across the street. We're proposing five units on three lots. On lots that are bigger than the duplex lots that are immediately adjacent to us. We've designed these such that the, uh, open space for each lot is significant. Approximately twice that required by the thirty five percent open space coverage ratio in the land use code. Uh, in fact, if you do a little bit of calculations. If these lots were twelve thousand four hundred forty five square feet each. The open space required for them would be thirty five percent of that number, which is in the order of forty four, forty five hundred square feet. Even though our lots would be about seventy percent the size of the twelve thousand four hundred forty five square foot. Uh, density required minimum, we would have about fifty five to fifty six hundred. Square feet of open space, so we actually exceed the open space by square footage. Then the ordinance requires, even if we were lots of twelve thousand four hundred forty five square feet in overall size. Because, you know, the special conditions out of the, um, we're in the RB district that allows two family dwellings, but it also by conditional use permit. Contemplates three family dwellings. So there's a sense of a greater density in the RB district. Uh, that is accommodated by this type of proposal. The land use code in table sixteen dash one notes that the RB district is appropriate. For older residential sections of Nashville surrounding the urban core. Couple that with the, uh, infill development goals in the land use code. Oh, go to establishing these special conditions. So with those in mind, we take a look at the hardship test, the two-prong test, and we would submit that. The density provision requiring twelve thousand four hundred forty five square feet. Of lot area for the two family dwelling does not bear a fair and substantial relationship. Between the general public purposes of that provision and its application in this case. We can readily construct the two family dwellings on each lot. We'll have a, a density on a unit basis overall, less than in a. Material way than the abutting properties. We can more than adequately establish open space. We can meet all the setback requirements and other dimensional requirements. Thank you. Uh, these sections aren't intended to preclude investment in the inner city, but to. Um, allow compatible investment in the inner city with the infill goal. Second prong of the test is that the use be reasonable. Again, it's a permitted use in the zone. I think by definition, it becomes reasonable in that context. So we appreciate the board's attention. Uh, we appreciate your insight and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the board? I'm not seeing any questions from the board, okay? Anybody present who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Mr. Florence?
Yeah, hello, this is my wife, Nicole, two step four Panama Hill Road, Milford, New Hampshire. Uh, just wanted to take a second to thank you for space and or taking the time to do this. Um, we art what we got the first time information aimed to this project, so. We did our homework and I really believe that our densities, which seemed to be the larger problem before. I think we've satisfied those. I've done some kind of homework on the area and. I, I feel like we've, we've done our due diligence there, so I, I think. I, I just wanted to thank you and I think we've. Done our best to, we can here. That's all, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Board have any questions? Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of the application? Not seeing anybody. Is there anybody present with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Carol Zypad.
Yeah, hi, Carol Landry, um, the member owner of RCL two C Properties, um, LLC. Uh, the owner of seven Fourth Street, the sixth unit which abuts, um. The Florence property.
Uh, could you give your address, please, for the record?
Yes, I'm at, uh, thirty seven Sagewood in Powell, New Hampshire.
Okay, continue.
Alrighty, so, um, I believe this is the second time I speak, um. And I may know ill will to the forensics, um, I'm sure that they're trying to do the best that they can as well. But. I see this as requesting a thirty one percent variance of, um, lack of land. And, you know, zoning, zonings are made for a reason. You're not supposed to put a house on a small property. The pictures that are depicted, um, that they've shared, th- they're lovely buildings. But what they also don't show are the decks that are going to fall behind these buildings. Which encroaches even more and takes up more space. Now, if, if the property already is requesting a variance of thirty one percent. I don't understand, I can't calculate where that scr- green space comes from. It's already short thirty one percent. If you need thirty five percent green space, I really don't understand where it's going to come from. I have concerns over the height of the building. The pitch of the, the roof and where the water will flow, because it will come across. More than likely our driveway, um, which is the coal side of the building. We already have concerns over ice. Um, and we have to take care of our tenants and keep that area clean. I'm concerned about the size of the decks that might come off the back of these properties. Um, I personally don't see a hardship because it's an open lot today and there's a lot of things that could be built there. Where it doesn't require a variance and the forensics are, could still, uh, profit from their investment. Um, I had a lot more to say the first time. I'm not going to reiterate. It's, it's kind of the same. Three buildings didn't fit or six buildings didn't fit. Four buildings don't fit either. And that's kind of where we're at. We're the abutters and we just don't see how. This is, um, good for the neighborhood. I, I. Don't even believe that the buildings that they're proposing actually fit in the neighborhood. They're, they're just not like the others.
Thank you. Uh, I will comment that the, uh, i- in terms of runoff onto other properties that would not be allowed. Uh, the city would ensure. You know, that the owner, um, the developer is not allowed to increase any runoff onto other properties. That's, that's part of the city ordinances.
I understand that and I live in a property right now that I have terrible runoff. And, um, they weren't, they didn't take care of me, so equally concerned for my other property.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Uh, not seeing anybody. I didn't see any letters that we received. Kate, we didn't get any. Okay, um, attorney Westgate. Uh, Dorf, first of all, are there any board members that have questions for, uh. The previous speaker, but, but, Mr. Courier?
Yes, um, just a question I have, um. It, it, it seemed to me on this application, not it seemed to me, but. Versus the previous application that. While there's a request before the board for a thirty three percent underage of. Lot size, uh, it, it does seem to me that. This proposal is in concert with the neighborhood all around Fifth, Fourth, Led Street. And. Am I seeing that incorrectly or, because, because in my mind, it seems consistent with that while there's still. A variance being added and I was just wondering, when I'm looking at your. Facility, your unit with six units, it just seems to be. Equivalent to that, or do I, am I seeing that wrong?
My units, while they're six units, they're only one bedroom units. It's actually not an oversized building. It, and I think that that's, um, part of what you might be seeing in the whole area. These buildings are not large buildings. They, in comparison to what is being proposed to be built here, yes, they're multi-unit. But they're not to the degree that is being proposed. My square footage is, is. I think overall, it's just about four thousand square feet for the whole building.
O- okay, thank you. All set.
Okay, uh, anybody else wishing to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing any, okay, um, attorney Westgate, you have five minutes to, uh, rebut, uh. The comments that were made or answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few thoughts, uh, of course, density is determined on a unit basis, uh, not on a. Square footage basis of the building, um, num, or, or floor area, that sort of thing. It's done on a unit basis. The issues of, uh, open space handle the size of buildings. Something that we are trying to accommodate in a, in a, in a very material way. Certainly, neither of these buildings, um, overall. Will be four thousand square feet total and they'll obviously be less than that. That is each duplex as a whole. So we're not putting a four thousand square foot building on an eighty six hundred square foot lot, for example. The, just to be clear again on the open space, so we certainly meet the thirty five percent. Open space requirement as indicated in the, the colored schematic. But we also meet it. Even if you take thirty five percent of twelve thousand four forty five. So. Twelve, thirty five percent of twelve four four five is about forty five hundred roughly. We're about fifty five hundred or better of open space on each lot. So we're accommodating it both on the percentage basis by almost double and on a, on a straight absolute square foot basis as well. And that, I think, was really kind of the primary issue that came up back in November was that concern of open space for each of the two lots. Decks or that, that sort of thing, of course, have to be built in accordance with the setback requirements. Um, they would not materially affect open space if they were in, installed. Relative to hardship, I've indicated the, the character of this neighborhood, the, the fact that these lots. Comp- comp- uh, compare more than favorably on a lot size basis with that. As the board is well aware, zoning has to, um, accommodate the character and be reflective of the character of neighborhoods. And when it's not, it imposes the hardship on those properties that are trying to fit within that character. We're proposing duplexes that are on lots substantially greater than the duplex lots nearby. And again, units is the measure of density. And the other dimensional criteria handle the other aspects of any lot development. Relative to stormwater or drainage, of course, the board, the chair noted correctly how that is handled in. City approval processes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Carol, you have, uh, five minutes to, uh, if, to make any final comments if you wish.
I guess the only comment I have to make is I still, um, I am opposed to what is being, um, sought after. I believe that there's plenty of room to put a single home there or two single homes. As originally the zoning board had recommended and, um. We don't, we're not opposed to something being put there, obviously. The city does need it. It just, um. It doesn't need to be this. Thank you.
Okay. At that point, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher, your comments?
Um, uh, I, I appreciate the, uh, abutters comments on, you know, the. The concerns that, that they have. I do believe, though, that this plan, though I had thought of things a little bit differently last time, but again, we're looking at this application. I, I believe that this application is, is well done. And what I mean by that is, is I think that there was significant thought put into it as to the design, the impact of the neighborhood, kind of meeting what the neighborhood's all about. I do believe that they, they meet that spare intent of the ordinance. And again, I think in, in, you know, with the applicant's testimony, again, open space not determining factor for me, but the significant amount of open space and what that will bring for that neighborhood, while also achieving what the applicant, you know, was looking to do, I think is significant. So I, I believe that it's, it's good use of that, that property, that proposed property. I think it fits into the neighborhood. I think it's going to be a benefit to the neighborhood, and I don't see it in any way as a detriment to the neighborhood. So with that, I'll support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw.
I'm generally in support of the application. I think the thing that's most compelling to me is just the nature of the, the density, you know, kind of completely surrounding this property. And while, yes, you know, I think that the, the struggle essentially ends up being that, you know, we, there is this, you know, still significant shortfall in the proposal, but when I look at the density of all the surrounding properties, I see much more intensive use. And so I think what's being proposed is, is very consistent with this immediate neighborhood. And so I guess that, that's primarily what leads me to support this.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I agree, and I support the variance as well. It's a well-designed plan to fit with the character of the neighborhood. I think it will be an overall benefit to the city and consistent with the density requirements or density of other lots in the area.
Thank you. Mr. Mancaro.
I, I also support the application. The, the density is, you know, far less than what is typical in the area. Two-family homes seem, are, seem to be the dominant housing type in the area. And so it, it's definitely consistent with the neighborhood in that sense. And I think that significant new investment will also be a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. Boras.
I'm also in support of the application for all of the reasons already stated by my colleagues.
Ms. McKay.
I'm in support of the application. It does meet the character of the neighborhood. There are two families. The one family and then the two-two families. It's a nice mix. I think they absolutely looked to try and get as much green space as they could. And being that close to a school, it, it's geared to families and it's close to downtown. It's what Nashua needs. They need the housing, and I think the applicants have done an excellent job, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Currier.
I'm in support of the application, and primarily the density of the surrounding neighborhood, you know, persuades me. This is, you know, there's still a thirty five percent request here, but I think, think that's reasonable, given the high density in the surrounding neighborhood. So I'm in support of it.
Thank you. And I'm also in support of it for the reasons that my colleagues mentioned. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Kenneth, Timothy, Jeffrey, and Kevin Forrester, owners of three and nine Fifth Street, Sheet eighty-seven lots three oh nine and three ten, requesting following variances, Land Use Code Section one eighty-sixteen, Table sixteen dash three. One, proposed lot eighty-seven dash three oh nine dash one, for a minimum lot area twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet required, eight thousand six hundred square feet proposed. And two, proposed lot eighty-seven dash three oh nine dash two, minimum lot area twelve thousand four hundred and forty-four square feet required, eight thousand six hundred square feet proposed. Both requests to combine existing lots eighty-seven dash three oh nine and eighty-seven dash three ten, and re-subdivide into three lots with lot eighty-seven dash three ten remaining as a conforming, single-family detached dwelling, and requesting a two-family dwelling on the remaining two lots to the ivory zone Ward four. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposals to the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We note that the, the proposal is in line with the density of the neighborhood. In fact, there is, there is more, there's, there's more density on other lots than what's being posed here. So again, the neighborhood's primarily that, that multifamily but two-family type setup. And we find that that fits right into this part of, this, this neighborhood, this part of the city. Again, the applicant has really worked hard to provide the maximum amount of open space, and we recognize that. And we find that it isn't a spare intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find that it's not contrary to public interest. We find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I would make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Congratulations. That's five to nothing. Your variances were approved. Again, there's the thirty day window of appeal, so please contact Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Are we good to go to the last case? Okay. Owner, Liberty Simon Street LLC, applicant forty-four Simon Street LLC, Thomas and Jeffrey Monahan Principals. Address is forty-four Simon Street. Sheet E lot twenty-two forty-seven, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen. Table fifteen dash one, item fifteen, to allow a four to five story, hundred and seventy-six unit multifamily building with parking garage under. This is in the Park Industrial Zone, Ward four. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Thomas Leonard. Can you hear me all right?
Can hear you fine, yes.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Thomas Leonard. I'm a lawyer in Nashua, representing the Monihans in this application. And I have with me Tom Monihan right in the same room with me. In fact, I think you're probably seeing his name under my face. But he's here with me. We also have Jim Petropolis, who is the engineer for the project, and I, I think he is on as well. So let me first kind of go through a summary of the proposal. I know we have five particular criteria that we need to address. I think our application does a pretty good job in addressing those, but let me first make sure that the proposal is, is clearly stated. We're talking about property that is presently in the Park Industrial Zone. It's on forty-four Simon Street, approximately six point seven acres. I think there's a, you, you can see that it was actually, so I'm pointing, I don't know if you can see my pointer?
Yeah.
It is this vacant lot that we're talking about. It used to be part of this overall lot. I'm pointing at a building that I will refer to as the Resonetics Building. It's actually a multi-tenant building. But that was, for lack of a better term, the mother lot. And this actually had a building on it at one point, but it was, as I understand it, it was demolished because it was essentially not leasable. So that's the area we're talking about. It's at the end of Simon Street. It is, as I say, about six point seven acres. Immediately next to the lot, you can see in this picture, there's the Nashua Canal, and then there is the Mines Falls Park, the city park. It's also at the end of Whipple Street, where you can see the fields and all. Further to the right, as you look at this plan, you can see that there is Led Street School, the Boys and Girls Club, and some other uses, residential uses immediately next door. If you go to the bottom of this plan, there, there are also some, some buildings. Now, I should give a little bit of a comment on the history of this subdivision. The subdivision was actually part of the Nashua Foundation subdivision, which was a, an industrial subdivision before the industrial zone. Most of these lots were created then, and it included all the way down to Will Street. The zone itself, the Park Industrial Zone, goes down to Will Street, but it does not include this area here, Hood Street, and it does not include the school. These, this lot here, which is on Will Street, and it's kind of a circular building, that is a residential multifamily elderly housing. And then this lot here, which is on Led Street, is within the Park Industrial Zone. It is a residential use also, a multifamily residential use. There is a, this particular one that I'm pointing to now, I think you can see the pointer, is a two-building. I believe it's referred to as the Davidson Complex. It is residential, but it's actually in a different zone, the resident, the RB zone. But the real point here is that there, there are two residential, multifamily residential properties within the PI zone, and one immediately next to it. Our proposal is, and actually, Kate, I think the next slide that we had showed a little bit, yes. So our proposal is on this vacant lot. One of the considerations that I, that I think is important for the board to consider is that there, while there used to be a building here, there also used to be a public street here. The public street was discontinued, but the utilities continue. And you, I, Mr. Petropolis has highlighted the area of the utilities and how it affects the lot. And it does have an important effect on the lot. Effectively, it cuts the size of the lot substantially to, to a smaller size. And it, it requires locating buildings to the bottom of the page as we look at it here. The red line that Mr. Petropolis has shown on this plan is the Shoreland Protection Act buffer, and that is two hundred fifty feet from the Nashua Canal. Now, within that area, there are restrictions. The building restrictions are actually not, you, you can actually build within the two hundred fifty feet, but it, but there are restrictions on use, what you can store, et cetera. So there is a direct impact. Our proposal is for a four or five-story apartment, four to five-story apartment. And the reason for that is there's parking on the first level. It's a hundred seventy-six units, parking and all, all planning type regulations will be met. But what we've done is we've asked for approval for the use permit, for the use variance, but also subject to Planning Board review under one ninety, twenty-three, C, D, E, and F. And the reason we did that is just a couple blocks away, there is the mixed-use overlay. And what that does is it affords the Planning Board the opportunity to pay particular attention to many of the details that are, that are necessary in a project such as this. So we, rather than simply asking for permission to build a hundred seventy-six units, we are asking for permission to submit a hundred sixty, a hundred seventy-six unit project to the Planning Board for their typical review that they would do under a mixed-use plan. So in effect, we are accepting as a condition those same conditions that would be imposed by the mixed-use overlay. And that was intentional, and, and we think it, it gives you some flexibility in, in your review. Kate, I think if, right here, yes, there we go. So in a conceptual sense, what we've done is, we're showing here elevations. Now, this is conceptual, but this is a building that's been, you know, it's a, a concept by an architect, obviously. And, and our plan is to have a fully appropriately designed project. It will be consistent with surrounding buildings. It will be consistent with the neighborhood, and, and it will meet all codes, et cetera. The city, as you've heard in a number of other cases here tonight, needs housing. This is particularly interesting housing in that there aren't many locations left where you can have a substantial multifamily complex close to the core city. Some months ago, about a year ago, actually, we, we had a proposal over in the Bronstein Apartments area. That is one, and it was an infill project. This project is not as dense as that, but would be subject to the same planning rules if, if it were to be approved. I think it's probably worth me talking a little bit about the unique characteristics of the property right now, just because that's always one of the primary concerns. And Kate, if you don't mind, we'll go back to that plot plan with the easements and all. One of the things that is unique about this property is that it is close to the center of town. And there are not many large enough tracts to, that are close to the center of town to take advantage of the inner core of the city. That is definitely a goal of the City of Nashua zoning. It's stated in master plan. It's also been stated by the recent, recently in, in planning discussions. So I think that's an important consideration here. This property is uniquely appropriate for high-density multifamily. It's adjacent to the Mines Falls Park, which is the city, the, the main park in, in the inner core. It is a ver, it, it has very good public, public infrastructure, sewer, water, all utilities, roads, et cetera. It has parks. It's immediately next to a school. It's immediately next to the Boys and Girls Club with additional parks. And then there are the physical limitations that we talked about in the plot plan, the easements, the sewer line, and the impact of the Shoreland Protection Act. It's also interesting that the Park Industrial Zone is identified in the Nashua zoning ordinance as a light industrial zone designed to be next to residential uses. So it is the lesser industrial zone, if you will, intended to be next to residential zones, as many are in the city and as this one is. What we have is a, a relatively small lot. It's not a, a lot that can be a big distribution center. It's not, it, it's relatively small. It's made smaller by the impacts of the easements. And it is the last lot in the subdivision that was really a part of the old industrial subdivision for Nashua Foundation. The site is different because of its size, because of its specific location, because it's the last one, and because it's close to the city, to the city core. It has many characteristics that are similar to the ones that are in mixed-use overlay district. It just did not get that far. Now, I think it's important, and, and I can certainly go through the points, but I want to make sure I have a, a, a comment or I'm able to comment on some comments from both Mr. Fark and from some of the abutters. So I, I think in the interest of time, I will respond to questions on some of the other issues. And let me, let me address a couple specific things. And, and they're fair comments. Mr. Fark specifically suggested that the board should consider Mr. Falk specifically suggested that the board should consider and discuss whether this should be accomplished through a legislative process, a zoning change. And I appreciate that, that comment. My suggestion here is that a variance is, is different than a legislative change. And if you're requesting a variance, it's because the ordinance works in an unusual way on you. And here, that is true. It's not necessarily appropriate for a rezoning because it really is only a six-acre area. And the zone, to, to spot zone six acres is probably not as appropriate as a variance. The variance, if it were to meet the criteria, as we suggest, it's the appropriate process. And, and keep in mind, as I know this board knows better than most, the variance process is to protect property rights in private property. And this particular property has unusual effect or impact of the zoning ordinance. The object, the other thing that I'd like to say is, in, in in response to some of the comment that Mr. Falk had, is that the object of zoning is not consistent uses.
Two minutes, sorry.
All right. The object is health, safety, and welfare. And one of the strategies, one of the ways to accomplish health, safety, and welfare is to make sure that uses are not unreasonably inconsistent. But I think it's important to look at the uses here and in this neighborhood, and they are light industrial. And this use is very consistent with many of the uses in the immediate area. In fact, some of the comments from other, other properties in the area are actually by, by properties that are used for offices as opposed to industrial uses. None of the industrial uses are heavy emission-type uses. There's no cement factories. There's no, none of the old-school nuisance-type uses are in this park. This is more of a, an office park, a research and development park. There are some light industrial uses, but nothing that is inconsistent with residential. And that's consistent with the park industrial definition. So I, I think it's, it's, that's an important comment. I think the other thing that Mr. Falk commented about is that we might be losing seven acres that could be used for industrial, but
Thirty seconds.
The purpose of zoning is health, safety, and welfare. And the courts in New Hampshire have made it clear that people have the right to use their property in a reasonable way, so long as it's not adverse to the public interest. And here, we can have this use, accomplish goals of zoning, that is, health, safety, and welfare, and allow this use without interfering with, with
I'm sorry.
Private property rights. So I'm certainly willing and, and can answer whatever, or we will make every effort to answer whatever questions the board may have. Our application does go through each of the five criteria. And let me leave it at that and, and, and answer whatever questions the board may have.
Okay, Mr. Shaw has notified me that he is recusing himself for this case, so Mr. Mancaro will be voting in his stead. Questions from the board? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, just wanted to get a sense of the history of the lot, of when it was subdivided off. So Terradyne owned it, and I have to say, I worked there for five years back in the eighties. I know it's hard to believe. I was just a kid back then, much younger than Kate is now. But here I am, still going. When, I, I believe Terradyne sold that in 2017. Or if you could just walk me through the history of when it was sold to, when this owner had it and when it got subdivided?
Yes. Yes, so I, I think your, your dates are essentially right. And, and my understanding is that it was sold sometime in 2016, 17. It was, there was actually an extra 100,000 square-foot building. I think in Mr. Falk's summary, he indicated that that 100,000 square-foot building was demolished. I understand it was demolished because the new owners determined that it was not practical to try to lease it. It was unlikely to be leasable. So they actually demolished, as a result of demolishing that building, the parking that you see and, and which has become this lot was not necessary for the main building. At, at about the same time in 2017, they subdivided off the 6.7 acres that is this lot, which we call 44 Simon Street.
So it, it would be my understanding that the easements on the lot were there from the time that Terradyne had it and were there from the time before and after it was subdivided and when this owner took ownership of it?
Yes, so the exact date of the discontinuance of the road. So it actually was a public road. I think it was called Foundation Drive or something to that effect. It was discontinued. I think the discontinuance occurred earlier, like in the 1980s. But that's, that's a, a guess from memory. But in any event, there was a discontinuance. The existing sewer easement remained as part of the discontinuance. And when the City of Nashua transferred the property rights to Terradyne, it reserved to the city rights in those sewers. So that's a public sewer under the parking lot.
So it, it would seem to me like the proposed building you have before us tonight avoids those easements. And, and it would seem to me that if this were a park industrial use, the building would be situated in the exact same place. And I'm struggling to understand the burden that the easements place on the park industrial use that it doesn't place on residential use.
Well, the primary difference is that residential use can go up. So this building is a four-to-five-story building. Industrial uses are generally going to be one, perhaps one and a half or two stories. So the, the actual building size, because you can't go up for industrial, i- it isn't as, as significant. There is also an impact. You can only store certain kinds of things, or let me, let me state it in the opposite. There are limitations on what can be stored within the shoreline protection area. So that's another limitation that is imposed by the, the particular location of this property as it relates to both the easements and the canal. But I, I, I agree totally that the building has to be in a similar place. The advantage of a residential building is that you can have a more substantial building, better use of the property, more efficient use of the resources, more efficient use of the public infrastructure.
Okay, another question I have is, or I guess a concern I have with the application is, is locating residential units, units within a existing park industrial zone. I mean, while the application speaks about it's an ill-suited site, which I'm not sure if I'm buying into at this point for, for park industrial. When I went back to, to look at this site, I, I was stunned and elated with the growth of park industrial use. That, that cleaning building, I'm not sure what the, the, the business is, but it's like a industrial laundry business. That wasn't even there. And then a lot of the other businesses were, were much stronger. And the UPS was substantially larger than it was before. And to me, it, it confirms maybe my difficulty with, with locating residences within kind of, to, to me, it seems like spot zoning at its worst by having residences surrounded what is joyfully a booming businesses.
So I appreciate your comment. They have been marketing it for, since 2017 without success. But I think the other thing that's important here is, as I mentioned, it is not a purpose of zoning to group uses together. The only reason that zoning can group uses together is if grouping uses together accomplishes a legitimate zoning purpose. For example, it protects the, or, or appropriately uses infrastructure, or it protects the value of surrounding properties. In a heavy industrial area, I can understand why you would have industrial uses must be in the same area because they do have an impact to surrounding properties. But here, in a park industrial area, the actual industrial uses don't have an impact on the neighboring properties. They're not heavy industry. And in fact, in this particular park industrial area, there are other residential uses immediately next door, and they are not adversely impacted. So I'm suggesting that simply because the zone doesn't allow the use, that's not the reason to deny a variance. It's, it's rather, and, and the courts in New Hampshire have been more and more consistent that property rights are fundamental. And property owners should be able to do with their property what is reasonable, so long as it's not obtrusive and, and doesn't interfere with the overall plan. And again, they've, they've specifically said that the compliance with zoning is not part of the plan. That's just the way you get to the plan. But if compliance is not necessary, then, then it's not fair to enforce those particular rules. And I think here is exactly that kind of case. We have a situation where the existing uses don't conflict with residential. In fact, there were some abutter letters or, or neighboring property letters, but the letters are written by people in offices, which, under the same rules, you, you, you might think would be in conflict with industry. And, and yet there have been no complaints. The people in offices have the same kind of potential conflict that residential uses do. So, and I, I would also say that many of the properties already abut residential uses. So to say that requiring this property to, or prohibiting a residential use is necessary to maintain the zoning scheme, I don't think is, is, I don't think that's accurate. I don't think that's a fair analysis of what's going on at the property.
Mr. Courier, did you get your question answered?
Yes, I'm all set for now.
But you can continue if you have other questions.
Well, yeah, I mean, just in, in part of the attorney's response. I mean, I concur that this park industrial doesn't have concrete factories and kind of old-school heavy industry. And there are, you know, a fair amount of offices, but the, the UPS facility with the 18-wheelers, that, to me, is pretty aggressive traffic that you, you wouldn't want to mix, so to speak, with residential use. It would be my, my gut feel on that.
So I, I appreciate that comment. And I, so I actually went out there. And of course, I know the area very well, as, as all of you do. But I went out there and I was reminded, there's a park there. Every, that park is used by what amounts to residential people. They are parked along the side of the road virtually every day, using the soccer fields and the park. And so when I went out there today, there were people riding bicycles. There were, the, the whole area was essentially being used by residential community people immediately next to the UPS facility. So I appreciate your comment. I think what I'm saying is I don't know that they're inconsistent. I don't know that there is as much in conflict as people would suggest they are. Because in fact, we are using it you know, many days a week. And, and it's being used safely, consistent with health, safety, and welfare of the community. So I, I appreciate your comment. I had the same question in my mind, and then I, you know, I, I went and experienced it or re-experienced it and
So I, I think we need to, to move on. Mr. Mancaro had a question. You're, you're muted, Jay.
I, I'm sorry. That was my point. I felt that we were straining, straying away from questions and debating the merits of the application.
Yeah, I, I agree. Other board members with questions? I have some of my own. One of the major concerns I have, because I'm very familiar with that area, is traffic. Now, for the, the existing office and, and, and light industry that's there, people tend to, you know, go in in the morning and, and they stay there until 5:00 PM or whatever. But I noticed that there's only, you know, sort of one way in, one way out to Simon Street. And it gets backed up a lot. I, I notice, I know on, you mentioned the soccer fields. Those are not people who live there. They are visiting the soccer fields. And they, and yes, they line Whipple Street with their cars. It seems to me, I, I have, had you had any traffic analysis done for the addition of 350-plus people appearing in this lot that's at, at the end of a dead-end street with only one way in and one way out?
So that is one of the reasons why we suggest the rules that the mixed-use overlay district apply. The plan, that's more appropriate for a planning board. There will be more information. The, the immediate answer to your question is we don't have a thorough traffic study because we're not really sure what to study. But I will, I will also say that, first off, there was 100,000-foot building there that had traffic, employees, et cetera. Something will have traffic. The other thing I'll say is that residential traffic is different than office traffic and industrial traffic, not only in its character, but also in its peak. And I, I'm sure that members of the board have more expertise on, on this than I. But it, there may actually be an advantage to having residential complex as opposed to a, a similar traffic generator that is, that has the same peak traffic as the present site or, or area. So, yeah, let me leave it there. But, but I, I would say the real answer is that's more appropriate at a planning board level when the details can be, can be looked at carefully. And we would expect that.
Thank you. Other board members with questions? No? Okay. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? No, okay. We received a lot of mailed and emailed notes with, with concerns and opposition. And I'm sure, and I, I'm guessing that there are people here on the call who have questions, concerns, or opposition. So let's, let's start with them. Okay. I guess, okay. Kate, please help me out. You're muted somehow.
My headset, thank you. Thank you. I, I think it might help if people started to put their names in chat if they wanted to talk, and then we could just kind of go down the list.
Yes, that would be great. If you're using the Zoom application, you can, you can either put your name in the chat or you can click on the reactions button, and then there's a raise hand button. And that, that will alert us that you want to speak. So I would ask that you do that.
I don't have any of that, but I certainly would like to speak. This is Buck Carlton, and I'm an owner. Any way of getting on?
Well, so far you're the first one. So please give your name and address for the record.
Buck Carlton, I own a building at 39 Simon Street. And, and I would like to say that I've got quite a bit of experience in buildings and in cities because my company has created two cities, one in South Jersey and one in Minneapolis from scratch that are now up at 30,000 people. And what I've learned is that if a city has a work area, a place where people go to work, that's vibrant, the cities do well. And if they lose that work area, the cities deteriorate. And this obviously, well, I say obviously, but by putting 276 people, units, not people, at the end of a dead-end street, which means that they've actually not created enough parking for it because we're talking for at least 350 cars and we're not even counting guests. What we're having is incredible traffic jam, which is already have congestion. And we're talking about, I'd say, 8:30 when people are leaving for work, you're talking with those cars, you're creating a mile-long, a mile-long of just cars in a line. So there's no way in heck that companies that are trying to run their business are going to stick around. And that means that they're going to, in today's world, everybody's consolidating. And they're either expanding or they're decreasing. And big companies don't have a problem from walking away from the building. But right now, you've got some open land and you're well set up for consolidating the other way where people might want to expand because you're right next to a interchange and you've got a land that's available. Now, the big thing is, if you don't respect your zoning, you've A, disrespected everybody who spent millions of dollars putting their buildings in there. But you're also going to keep anyone from ever wanting to come back again if they can't trust that the city of Nashville will honor what it's come up with in the way of zoning. So the next story is, all this traffic is going to kill everybody that's working there now. There's no way that, just my building is going to be emptied out. But more importantly, the big guys are going to disappear on you. So you have to respect your zoning the way it is. And this traffic, which everyone's overlooking, is going to be incredible. It's just incredible. It's going to stop everyone from there now wanting to be there. They're going to let their leases go. They may even just walk away. So please, 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 respect your zoning because that is the lifeblood of Nashville. And if you don't have a workplace, you don't have a lively town. And I think I got two minutes left, but all I can say is, this is crazy. 276 units in a dead-end street. Where they're going to, what happens if there's an accident? How are you going to, the only way they can move up is go down. I mean, it's nuts. And to be even thinking about it, it's crazy. The only thing this fellow wants to do is to buy land cheap because industrial land is cheaper and then make more money. If he wants to help Nashville, he can go out, we're zoning properly for housing and go build 276 units there. It's simple. All he's trying to do is make more money. And he's even going to find out that he won't even fill this building by the time he's through with not enough parking to satisfy the customers he's got. There it is. It's simple. You shouldn't be there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. John Bissin. You put your name in.
My name is John Bissin. I'm an attorney in Manchester, New Hampshire. And I represent the North Crest Executive Park condo association, which is just up the street.
And your contact address, sir?
It is 35, 39, I'm sorry, 39 Simon Street. It's actually a condominium, 19 separate units. All of the units are occupied by businesses that are there without use variances. So that means that their uses are consistent with the way the property is currently zoned. And no one needed any special permission to be there. I do want to, I'm going to try to be brief because you have been incredibly patient this evening. And you have a lot on your plate. I do want to point you to your own website. And your own website touts this part of the town under its economic development page. And it lists 10 attractive business districts in Nashua, one of which is the Simon Street Business District. And I'm just going to quote from your website. It says that the business districts are each with its own character and advantages for different industries. Several business parks allow companies to benefit from advanced infrastructure and a synergy that comes from similar industries in close proximity to each other. And there's a separate link for Simon Street. And Simon Street Industrial Park is defined, described as being home to a diverse group of traditional and high-tech manufacturers. And its proximity to the turnpike make moving products and supplies in and out quick and efficient. So clearly, the big draw of this neighborhood is not because it's close to the park or Mine Falls or the canal. It's that it's a business hub in Nashua that's close to the turnpike. And I hope that's not lost on the board tonight. Just some things to point out with respect to the application. It's unclear specifically what variances the applicant is looking for. Because the cover page to the application makes reference to simply a use variance. But then, in its narrative, and I'm going to quote from that, it says that it is looking for a variance for the use and other regulations set forth in sections 190-23, C, D, E, and F. So I'm unclear specifically what the applicant is actually trying to accomplish. It looks like a sort of a broad rezoning of this, of this parcel rather than simply just a use variance. So I hope that you can explore that sort of ambiguity in the application with the applicant. So then specifically, with respect to the criteria, I didn't hear much about the actual variance criteria. I heard about location and that the fact that it's near some amenities in the town made it suitable for this use variance. I don't think that's actually the standard. And in addition, we've already talked about the traffic issue. But significantly, both Whipple Street and Simon Street are one way in, one way out. And they come to the point. And at that point is where the North Crest Executive Park condo is. So we're right at that juncture where Whipple Street and Simon Street come together. UPS, as has been pointed out, is a huge facility there. They generate a ton of traffic at 9:00 in the morning and at 3:00 in the afternoon when there's a shift change. The applicant is looking to bring in
One minute, sir.
Thank you. 264 parking spaces, obviously a significant amount of traffic. One thing that has not been addressed is diminution of value. And I know that we usually see this from the other side, how our residential value is going to be impacted. But listening to Mr. Carlton speak before me, when you put a residential community in the middle of an existing industrial park, there is a serious concern about bringing complainers to the neighborhood. So that whatever future use is put into the industrial zone, those residences that you have allowed will likely be open to complaining about future uses. And there should be some examination of whether putting residential in an industrial zone actually negatively impacts the value of industrial properties.
Your time's up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next is Greg Bell. And Keith after that.
Looks like his audio is having issues.
Okay.
He was speaking and I couldn't hear him.
Bearman?
Yes, Mr. Fall.
Can I just interject something real quick? I know it's been mentioned a few times tonight about this mixed-use zone and some of the mixed-use zone categories. Staff had advertised this as purely a use variance to allow a multifamily development in a park industrial zone. This is not a mixed-use zoning district. So it cannot be considered under any of the mixed-use criteria. It's purely a use variance to allow multifamily in a Yep. Shouldn't get into any mixed-use stuff. Thank you.
Mr. Bell, are you, are you able to speak? We can't Sort of, yes.
Sorry, I apologize. Yeah, my name is Greg Bell. I am the chief operating officer at Clearline. We're at 24 Simon Street, about to enter into the next phase of another five-year lease. And I would just like to reiterate the, already the issues we have with traffic. And as we come in from exit 5A, especially a lot of people who are, who are coming in to our facility, you get to that four-way stop and you get down there and then you can't turn left into our parking lot. So it's, it's already bad at 9:00 and 5:00. I do believe that it will, it is, this is weighing heavily in our decision on whether or not we renew our lease, which is due in April of 2022, or whether or not we will vacate the building. We do want to be an industrial park. We're in what was the former General Dynamics or Axis Building, where we do build security and surveillance cameras. You will see us throughout the day on top of the facility because we do have, where we support border security. So we're shooting our cameras over, over the park, not looking down at the park. But now, I am concerned on how we will be perceived or how we'll be looked by those residents when they see someone who is set up their business in an industrial park now has cameras on top of their facility looking out. And that will be perceived as well. And I would like to say that in our parking lot, we have probably been responsible for training half of Nashville's young drivers because irregardless of the fact that we have signs up that say this is private property, everyone seems to come in there and teach their kids how to drive. So that you bring even more residents in there with fewer places to park. They're going to, they're also going to be just crowding our parking lot. So I, I do ask you to follow your gut and the things that you've been saying about the concerns with parking and traffic. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Keith from Rapid Finish in 43 Simon Street.
Your last name, please?
O'Halloran. I'm going to make it short and sweet. I was out front today and I counted 14 straight jobs, 24-foot box trucks that came down and about 12 tractor-trailers. And out of the 12 tractor-trailers, about seven come down, make the U-turn down by the circle down there. And you know, that's not going to stop. That's going to continue. So I just, you know, again, I make the right decision and let's keep this industrial.
Thank you. You can lower your hand now.
This is Paul Bodak here. I don't know how to get the chat to work.
Well, okay, you, but you're, you're next. So go ahead, give your name and address for the record, please.
This is Paul Bodak. I'm at 41 Simon Street. And I, back in 2004, we purchased the building and we were attracted by the city. The building originally, just quickly, was a multi-wire, a multi-wire-built circuit boards. And I'm hearing people talking about office, offices and work. Well, we still build circuit boards there. We have chemistry coming in the building. I don't know what the definition of light industry is. But we are not just a office building. We, we are permitted. We have all our permits and everything. And I would hate to have a residential complex built across the street from us with the industry that we have running in the building, which started back in 1970. Keith brought about truck, truck, traffic. And I can say to you, the light right now to get out, get out of the park, it's 12 seconds long. I've timed it numerous times. I've talked to the city about it. If you're the 12th car in line, you can't get out of that park. And the city hasn't been able to fix that issue at all yet. We're a zone, as you know, as an industrial park, putting residents in the same area really doesn't fit. The park itself that everyone's been talking about, come on weekends and see all the trash and everything that's left there today and try finding parking spots. Come to my parking lot and see all the trash that's thrown in my own parking lot. And all, all of this added, this building will add more issues, I believe, to our existing park right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the Zoom here who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay, I'm not seeing any. All right. We got, as I said, a lot of letters. And we would be here all night and into the next day if I read, had to read them all. Let's see, how do we, how are we going to handle this? Because they need to be entered into the records somehow. And
You can scroll them across the screen.
You could scroll them across the screen, yes. And I mean, there were certainly many copies of the same letter signed by different people. And so we don't necessarily need to show all of those. So Keith, are you able to start scrolling? Okay, so we got, we got a lot of them from this office here. And with just the names changed. I think we probably got a couple of dozen of these. Okay, here's, here's a different one from somebody, James Bernard from Bronz Craft.
On Simon Street.
Yeah, Simon Street, yeah. Okay, Keith O'Halloran, he spoke a moment ago. Okay, that's good. This is from company, Paul Bodak of Tanguay Avenue, LLC, 41 Simon Street. Okay. Somebody actually recognized that I was here. Okay. This is rather a long one with various
This is attorney Bissin.
Oh, attorney Bissin speaking. Okay, very good. Okay.
Marcus Weber at 39 Simon Street. Jennifer, no name, last name given, 44 Simon.
And that's the orthodontist or dental. Yeah, it's the same one. Also the same one, yes. Yeah, another one.
These will all be a part of the physical file as well in the public records. And we can post this on the website, too.
An oral surgeon, okay.
There were multiple from 44 Simon Street.
Okay, we have another one here from
Mr. Carlton. He was the first speaker.
Yes, thank you. Cory Dakota, 39 Simon. John Cook, 14 Cliff Road. Earl Witt, 39 Simon Street, also 97 Richardson Road. Carol Howe, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, Helen Beck, 39 Simon Street. William Flynn. Franklin Pierce University. And I believe that is the totality of them.
Okay, so.
And these, these are also sent to the applicant as well for their review.
Oh, okay, that's, I'm very glad to hear that. Last call for anybody on the, on the Zoom who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition. Okay, not seeing anybody. The applicant now has five minutes to rebut the objections that were made. You need to unmute yourself, sir.
Okay, thank you. First, let me say that thirty-nine Simon Street are the offices. And I think that all but two or three of those letters are from thirty-nine Simon Street. That's the office complex that has been condominiumized. That's who Attorney Bissin represents. That's the green firm. That's a, a couple of the other commenters. So I, I appreciate their comments and I understand the concern about traffic. My earlier statement about traffic holds. I think that's a planning board issue. It will, it will get addressed. There is going to be traffic from this site, no matter what. With regard to the request, I think Mr. Falk stated it accurately. We are asking for a use variance for multifamily residential use. And we are suggesting that you can impose a condition that we must comply with the same rules and regulations that a mixed use multifamily. I'm sorry, that a multifamily project would comply with if it were in the mixed use overlay district. It's an easy, easy application and it appropriately delegates authority to the planning board for matters such as traffic, et cetera. With regard to the variance criteria, our application is, is very complete. It addresses each of the criteria. Given the time constraints, it's awful hard to go through all of this and answer questions and, and try to try to put it all in here. But certainly, the primary comment that we have is that this, that the goal of zoning is to appropriately use infrastructure and protect surrounding properties. I recognize that there's a worry about protecting surrounding properties. But I think that the, the worry is unfounded and overstated under these particular circumstances. And I'd submit to you that the existing circumstances out there demonstrate that. Many of these existing uses already are immediately adjacent to residential uses. The property itself is particularly appropriate for multifamily because of its location to the park and its location at the center of the core. And that makes it.
Could you please respond to the, the comments that were made in the objections?
Well, those were the objection, those were one of the objections. And I think, I think the traffic we've commented on. With regard to the diminution in value, the, again, the existing circumstances out there demonstrate that there is no reduction in value when you're next to a residential complex. It, it exists out there now. If there are questions, I can try to answer them. But I think that addresses the, the specific comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. So the, the way it works now is that one and only one person with questions, concerns, or opposition may choose to have five minutes to make a, a final rebuttal. Or or you can just let it, let it lie. And I'm gonna suggest that people if, if there is anybody who wants to do that, please put your name in the chat. And, and otherwise we'll, we'll just proceed.
Buck Carlton, I don't know how to put in the chat, but I defer to our lawyer. Otherwise, I'd like to respond.
Okay, and your, your lawyer is? Mr. Bissin, okay. Mr. Bissin, did you want to take a few minutes to the final statement? Your choice.
No, I think I'm, I think I'm good. I think we've covered it all. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, then I will take over. I just want to reiterate what I've told through experience, not through some course, that if you lose a center for work, you deteriorate the whole town, the whole city. It's not just all of Nashville is gonna be affected by the fact that this area will no longer be acceptable for light industry. It was that simple. Now, we just heard someone say that for, if you had a lineup of twelve cars, it was difficult for him to get out of his driveway. We are talking about three hundred and fifty cars. And we, and that's not even counting guests. And we're talking about when at nine o'clock or something, they want to go to work. That's creating a mile long of cars, just cars, allowing twenty-five feet for each car. That's a mile of cars sitting there trying to get somewhere. And there's going up and they're going down. It's a dead end. And we, we doesn't matter whether this place is near other parks, what have you. We're talking about the street. We're talking about that street with all the congestion is gonna lose the people that are there. The other thing I do think is important to say that if Nashville does not honor its zoning, it's not gonna be able to lure in other industries to figure, hey, I'm gonna spend a couple of million dollars here, maybe five or ten million. And then they'll change the zoning avenue in a week, in a year or two. So I think it's important that, that Nashville upholds what it has put down for people to rely on. And obviously, the people have already spent millions of dollars to put their buildings here are obviously going to be field, felt that they are not being responded to. And finally, it's just crazy to, even for the guys putting the building up, two hundred and seventy-six people. He needs much more parking, but he's saying he needs to put down there just for that alone. Even the people going there are gonna get annoyed with the fact they can't even get into their own units. So all he's doing is trying to save a few dollars by buying land that is less valuable because it's zoned industrial and not going to put his building where it should be, where it's zoned for residential. I, I just can't, I, I mean, I'd like Nashville. Nashville is a good place to be. We're happy in Nashville. But this is not just for, about Simon Street. It's about Nashville being devalued completely all the way down the line because they're gonna lose a workplace. And I really can't emphasize that how you can, how you can say, oh, well, we haven't talked about parking. We haven't talked about the traffic. Well, of course, they're talking, haven't talked about traffic. My God, they're talking about three hundred, four hundred cars. It's crazy. Thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Could you give your, your name and address again for the record? Cause.
B W K K Carlton, C A R L E T O N. I'm the president of Land Tech Corporation, which is up in Lebanon, New Hampshire. As I say, we've created two cities. And that shows how old I am. With that experience, I can tell you, if you lose the work face, you lose the city. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Ms. McKay, your comments.
Um, well, I think on this we had a similar request to put residential apartments in a park industrial zone. And we ultimately felt that we were not qualified to make a legislative decision. We could only render decisions based on zoning ordinances that were in existence. And so I still feel that way. I, I don't feel like we have the power to change this city's zoning determination or how, how they do their zones. While the developer is a fantastic individual and does amazing, amazing things. This right here is a huge conflict that I don't think belongs to the zoning board, but I think it belongs to the Board of Aldermen to make that determination, should they so desire to change the zones. And I guess that those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
In some ram, I'm not finding support for this application. I, I'm gonna speak to the hardships. I, I'd like to point out that, uh, wh- while maybe the applicant feels fifteen minutes is short, we've all received the written application. And certainly for myself, and I'm sure for you, I've read every word of it. You know, and I, I focus a lot on hardship and I, I don't find hardship argument persuasive really at all. The, the, the encumbrances on the land were there from before it was subdivided. They were there after it was subdivided. Then whoever subdivided it and whoever sold it or bought it afterwards knew full well what those are. And I see no difference on those easements, whether it's park industrial and or residential. So I see no hardship there that would warrant relief from the park industrial zone. And, and so also the I, I, I feel like I said before, it is spot zoning. While there's been a lot of comments about residences nearby, the Boys and Girls Club, that's on a different street. Those other properties are not on Simon Street. This is at the end of a dead end zone. A dead end street. And I think it's a spot zoning and inappropriate. I, I also go back to the truck traffic is very heavy. I'd also like to say that there is a lot of park use, but I think Whipple Street is excellently designed with the big turnaround. I park there all the time. I rarely would walk or ride my bike down Simon Street. I enter from other areas because Simon Street is a heavily traveled street. And I, I think it's inappropriate to have residences at this end. So I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher.
I'm also struggling with the application. I, I think first and foremost, I do appreciate and the fact that, you know, this, this project in and itself, I think would be a, 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 a very good, great good thing for a city in Nashville. I'm just struggling for, for, for its location. And again, the hardships on, the hardships that, that are, that are perceived to be on the property. I think I, I pretty much agree with Mr. Courier's comments that, you know, this, this is an existing piece of property that's been there, that has been in this park. I, I, I guess I don't. I personally don't know. You know, I know that there, there was efforts made to market the, the property. But again, you know, to, to be, I'm just looking at it for what it is and for what it stands. I know specifically what the applicant's talking about, about other, other residential areas, being close to the park industrial. I worked on Will Street for thirteen years almost, at the Penachuck Distribution Center. I could tell you that there was concerns from the neighbors when we were there. So we did a lot of, did a lot to try to keep things down because we did a lot of after hours stuff, work. But again, we, you know, we had, we had a, you know, we were able to work there consistently. I know that Bronze Craft, again, again, just to, to the fact that it is really the industrial area, Bronze Craft. When it was running during the day, you can hear all their, their machines that they used to deliver material. That was like a, like a, like a low roar all the long. That whole corridor to me is, you know, again, what it was. It was the light industrial. You know, it's not like, I guess if this was, in my mind, if this was in a different location, as far as its location. I'm not saying that I would approve it. If it was on Let Street, or if it was literally right next to, you know, physically next to another residential area. I'm not saying that that's the reason why I would deny it. I'm just saying that in this location where it is, I think it's still suitable for park industrial. I, I guess I just don't, I just can't get there for the, the hardship that is being presented. Though I do believe that, you know, having the housing in, in the plan itself, it, it, it's, uh, it's really good. I just can't get there. And, and, you know, I'm still, I'm struggling a lot with trying to get there. So I'll leave it at that for now.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis.
I'm actually leaning in support of the variance. I think it's somewhat consistent with the master plan and increasing housing closer to the city core. We have a major need for housing in Nashville. I, I agree with the applicant as to the residential properties nearby. I run through Mines Falls and come out on Simon Street to make my way back towards where I live up, up on Main Street. And going through the residential areas there. He's made efforts since twenty seventeen for four years to, to market the property. And I think that the Shoreline Protection Act is somewhat limits the uses. And it's, it's a struggle to find industrial uses as it is. We see a lot of vacant industrial properties. And last thing is just that us granting the variance wouldn't be the, the end of the road for the applicant. He would still have to go through planning for other issues. The main one, which seems to be traffic. Even if we were to let it go through now, you would still have to get planning board approval on some of those bigger issues. So I'm leaning in support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Mancaro.
For me, a use variance is a particularly high bar. And there are times where we have a scenario where the use that's proposed is not consistent with the zone, but really is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. There's other times where we have properties that maybe zones, say, industrial in an older industrial area that really is no longer industrial in character, where industrial uses are no longer viable because of, say, the location, changing technology, et cetera. I, in this case, what we have is what is seemingly a viable industrial park that was laid out as an industrial park and is zoned to be an industrial park. Reasonably well located next to a highway exit. To me, that's good planning. That's what good planning is really about. Both the zoning, as well as actually what's there on the ground, what was planned to happen are, you know, in concert. What we have proposed is a use that's completely inconsistent with both the character of the existing area, the developed industrial park, and the way it's zoned. And I can't see any compelling argument for why we should grant a variance. Frankly, when I look at any of the points of law, I, I don't see how they're met to grant a variance to allow a use that's completely incompatible with the surrounding uses in the heart of a developed industrial area. It's already been said by the applicant, this is the last lot remain. It's the last lot remaining because we have, in fact, a viable industrial district. We don't just have office uses. We have a variety of uses, including a foundry, which is actually a pretty heavy industrial use. We have UPS, we have trucking, we have shipping that's happening in this area. I do believe that a residential use in this area is, you know, completely incompatible. I don't see how the hardship criteria is met. I don't see how any of the criteria are met in allowing use like this. And I do believe. And I do believe that allowing a large-scale residential use, not at the periphery, but in the middle of an industrial zone, would be detrimental to the use, operation, and value of the surrounding uses. So I can't find any support for this request.
Thank you. Ms. Boros. You're muted.
I'm also struggling with the application as presented, based on everything that's already mentioned by my colleagues, and especially all the points just mentioned by Jay Mancaro.
Thank you. I'm not struggling. I can't find any support for this whatsoever, and Mr. Mancaro expressed my opinions quite eloquently. I will comment that, you know, this is very similar to the case that we had in our last meeting, where Flatley wanted to build a large multifamily building, or actually set of buildings, in a park industrial zone in the south of Nashville. And we basically said, we're not in the, we're not in the business of rewriting the city's zoning laws. If the applicant really wants to be able to put a residential unit there, they should, you should approach the city alderman and ask for spot zoning. I think it would be a terrible idea. As has been stated, this is a very vibrant industrial era part of Nashville, and plunking a large multifamily residential unit in there is going to cause problems in multiple ways. I cannot support this. Any other comments from the board? No. My sense from the voting members is that this is going to be a motion to do not, to deny. Would somebody care to make that motion? No takers, huh? All right, well, I guess I'll do it then, right? Haven't done this in a while. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of owner Liberty Simon Street LLC, applicant forty-four Simon Street LLC, Thomas and Jeffrey Monahan Principals, address forty-four Simon Street, Sheet E, Lot twenty-two forty-seven, requesting use variance from Land Use Code Section one ninety dash fifteen, Table fifteen dash one, Item fifteen, to allow a four-to-five-story, one-hundred-and-seventy-six-unit multifamily building with parking garage under. This is in the park industrial zone, Word four. The board does not find that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. The board does not find that there are any special conditions of the property such that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible, other than the variance. The board does not find that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We believe that it will adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. That the board believes that it is contrary to public interest, and substantial justice may or may not be served, but the other points of law are not met. Therefore, I make a motion to deny this variance. Do I have a second? Mr. Courier, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? No? Okay, and a reminder, Mr. Mancaro will be voting on this, this case. Ms. McKay, how do you vote?
Ms. McKay votes in favor of the denial.
Thank you. Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of the denial.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Mancaro, how do you vote? You're muted, Jay.
Mr. Mancaro votes in favor of the denial.
Okay, and I, Mr. Lionel, also vote in favor of the denial. Unfortunately, that's five to nothing. The variance is denied. You have a thirty-day window of appeal. You can request a rehearing. Please contact Mr. Falk at the Planning Department if you need help with that. And that ends the last case of the night. We have no current rehearing requests. We can review the agenda for the next meeting. Kate, would you please bring that up if you can?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your efforts and diligence.
You know, thanks for putting in the time.
Good night.
Good night.
We have four cases for the next agenda. I also sent it to you earlier.
Yes, did see it. I didn't, I didn't notice any regional impact. Does anybody else see any regional impact?
I do not see any regional impact. Mr. Courier does not.
Mr. Shaw does not.
Ms. McKay does not.
Mr. Courier, what about you?
Oh, let me unmute myself. I do not see any regional impact.
Okay, fine.
Sorry.
All right. Okay, we have draft minutes from the April twenty-seventh meeting. Does anybody see anything that needs to be edited or any problems with the minutes? I did not.
Mr. Courier did not see any, change any for any edits.
Okay, so will the, say, make a motion to accept the minutes? I will make that motion. Who have a second? And Mr. Shaw. All those in favor of accepting the minutes? Well, no, roll call vote. Sorry, you got to do the roll call vote. Okay, Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor of accepting the minutes.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Ms. McKay.
Ms. McKay votes in favor.
Mr. Mancaro. Oh, excuse me, wrong. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. It's getting late, folks. Okay, motion to adjourn.
No move.
Okay, we are adjourned at eleven eighteen.